Thank you councillors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders, past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that Councillor Hammond and Councillor Marks will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that councillors Hammond and Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy?
Chair, I move that councillors Griffiths, Cook and Johnston be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Strunk that councillors Johnston, Griffiths and Cook be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,687th meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,687th meeting of council held on the 9th of August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant today, Ms Rachel Bowes or Bows, which do you prefer, Rachel?
Bowes.
Bowes, thank you. Ms Rachel Bowes, who will address the chamber on her project Energy Galore 500. Thank you, Ms Bowes. You have five minutes once the microphone's on. Going now.
Okay. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address the chamber today on a very important programme in preventative health policy and practice. For the last 22 years in Brisbane, leading from Brisbane and beyond, I've educated people from all areas of life in the context of health choices, specialising in movement awareness and fine tuning this intelligence. I profoundly believe in the power of movement energy is the number one tool we all have to make significant and sustainable changes to our health and wellbeing, both in the quality of our years and the years lived. The Energy Galore 500 is an awareness campaign that seeks to encourage and promote balanced action around crucial and vitally important aspects of health management. These are: number one, the balance between our physical energy and our brain health, neuroplasticity; two, the balance and delicate relationship between the nuances of moving from competitive sport to moving sustainably for life; number three, the balance between integrating the neural, physical and sensory actions of Energy Galore to strike a holistic integration anywhere, anytime and any place; the balance, number four, the balance between proactive daily individual management of these practices with relieving pressure on our wider health system; and number five, the balance between the very nature of the Energy Galore exercise prescription and its ability to sublimate or raise the vibration on our emotional intelligences, things like empathy, self-awareness and listening, which in turn strengthens the balance of any human relationship, both the vulnerable and the strong. The Energy Galore 500 promotes the essential and fundamentals of a healthy and positive attitude through the gateway of five key energy systems. These are: number one, our core energy, which entails the very essence of moving and thinking better, things like our breath, our posture and things that relate to our inner strength. The second is balance, an energy system that's really essential to fine tuning things like our physical alignment, working with the two sides of our body to work best as an integrated synergistic whole. The third is our rhythm. We all move to a certain beat and this is the exploration of the power of utilising our own musical beat to build flow, ease and grace of movement, and one that is most critical to the retention of whatever we choose to do in our movement strategy. The fourth is resistance, which is the navigation of all things strength, our relative body weight resistance work and also our absolute strength protocols we choose, which are vital to boosting a lean metabolism and also offsetting chronic illness and disease. The fifth, my favourite, is flexibility, the timely integration of which can bend most stresses, whether they're perceived or real, in the body to better pathways. And we should persevere with all of these practices until it is easier to breathe, balance, beat, boost and bend than not to. The time to integrate the principles of the Energy Galore 500 is now. There's never been a better time and collectively as a community to help to scale and promote the importance of our family and friends' health choices. We have returned from a global pandemic where the last two years have tested the individuals' resolve to find balance and survive. I recruited over 500 beautiful examples of energy in our city during this time and that can all be seen on my current narrative on my transparent Energy Galore Facebook group. We must continue to educate the common sense values that lie at the heart of the Energy Galore 500 if we are to strike a better narrative between present and future epidemics in mental health, violence, and we must do so voraciously. So I implore all councillors to share in your upcoming marketing distribution the links to the interfaces where I will relaunch the initial campaign I created and developed in 2013, which is to attend the Energy Galore 500 event, which asks all people in Brisbane to explore my 500 blue ball ocean of Energy Galore, to check in with their five, to keep moving well and sustainably and to encourage others to do so. The Energy Galore 500 has the potential to draw together individuals regardless of race, gender, age, culture and religious standing. It speaks a powerful universal language that needs to be at the heart of our creative campaigns to build our best Olympic city over the next 10 years, to boast Brisbane as not only the best city but a city that cares about its citizens and its community. I propose that this event takes place in Brisbane this year on the 20th of November in 2022 in one of our stunning open green spaces, and it's perfect timing as the World Cup commences the next day. It's also a prime time to bounce off our athletes' success in Birmingham where they both inspired and achieved great success.
Ms Bowes, that's your five minutes. Thank you so much. Very well. Councillor Howard, are you responding? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Rachel. And Rachel has been to visit me and I must say that your flexibility is much, much better than my flexibility. But really thank you for coming in today and taking the time to address the chamber. We know how passionate you are about this and we also know how important it is to keep active and healthy. And it was certainly wonderful to have the opportunity to meet with you earlier this year and to learn about your passion and helping others and to achieve that healthy lifestyle. And it's great that the chamber has now shared in that opportunity to witness your passion and enthusiasm firsthand and to call all of our councillors to take note of what's on your Facebook and to help wherever we can. So we share your passion for supporting an active and healthy community and that's why we're very proud to deliver more than 17,000 free and low cost activities across the city every year as part of our active and healthy programme. As part of this programme, we offer a wide range of fun, exciting, unique and different ways for residents to get active and healthy, with everything from yoga to kickboxing, rock climbing, kite surfing or fishing. So there's a whole range of activities there. It really is an amazing programme with more than 130,000 residents participating in one of our active and healthy activities every year. So I know our council officers have already been in touch with you to talk about how you can apply to be part of that active and healthy programme and we certainly welcome your application so that we can get the ball rolling on exploring opportunities on how we can work together and create a healthier Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Bowes. Thanks for coming in. Councillors, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Landers?
Thank you.
Sorry, councillor.
That's okay.
Councillor Hutton, my apologies.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, one of your first policy decisions was to amend our procurement rules, to give a higher weighting to tenderers who are local suppliers. With this policy having reached the end of its first full year, could you please update the chamber on some of the results of this policy, including how it helps keep Brisbane as the most small business friendly council in the country?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councillor Hutton, for the question. I know that you are a big supporter of local business, as is everyone on this side of the chamber, and we believe in working with local business to deliver great outcomes for our community. There are so many things that we do as a council that we can work with local businesses to deliver. There are thousands of suppliers who provide amazing services and products for the people of Brisbane to benefit from. And I know that we were down at a business in Your Ward, it was last year, talking about the benefits to that particular landscape and supply business. But we have now, since 2019, had a target of having at least 80% of our annual procurement going to South East Queensland local businesses. And that was, at the time we announced it, an aspirational target. Before that time, it was approximately 65%, 67% of contracts were going to local businesses. So it was a majority already, but I believed, and this team believed, that we could do better. And I'm pleased to report that with the end of the recent financial year, we have done better. And in fact, this past 12 months, we have seen $1.1 billion invested with local Brisbane, South East Queensland businesses. $1.1 billion. Now, there's a lot of government projects at different levels that claim to be stimulating local business, but not many of them could say that they are putting $1.1 billion into local businesses to support local jobs, to help put food on the tables of local families. But this council is doing it. We're using our size and the services and products and projects that we deliver and leveraging that to make sure we support local business. And so this year, in the past 12 months, we've achieved not 80% of contracts going to local business, but 83%. 83% and $1.1 billion worth of spend. Now, we know about some of the high profile projects, like the locally built double decker City Cats built by Oz ships down at Mairee, but you may not know about some of the other smaller but also exciting business opportunities like H2 Flow. It's a great example of a local business who, through getting work for council, has been able to grow and expand and then provide services not only just to us but to so many other people as well. Now, H2 Flow has been able to expand the number of water trucks that they have, from three water trucks when we first gave them a contract, now to over 100 water trucks. 100 water trucks. And so this is an example of how we're actively supporting local business. And it's not just the water trucks, it's the people that are associated with that business. It's not just the drivers, it's all of the support staff and it's the flow on effect in the local economy, which is significant. And so we are very proud of our support for local business. We know that the other side of the chamber has a very different view. They believe everything should be done in house. They believe nothing should be done in partnership with local business. They believe in robbing local business of $1.1 billion worth of investment in a 12 month period. That's what they believe. Let's be clear about what they believe. They believe that everything should be done in house. And so the contrast could not be clearer. We support local business. We support small business. We support medium business. We support the people that support Brisbane and create jobs for our community. And that is just one of many, many things that we're doing to support our business in our city. The creation of the Brisbane Economic Development Agency, something that we evolved from Brisbane Marketing into a different organisation that focuses on different things and particularly geared up during the pandemic to support local business. Our seven day payments for small business suppliers, not 30 days, not 40 days, seven days, they receive a payment from council if they are suppliers and they are small business. Our Brisbane Business Hub, which we have now at Nunda as well, a suburban hub and a central hub. Our local buy policy I mentioned, our business hotline, the Brisbane App, which is all about supporting our community and helping link them with local businesses. The Local Business Partnership Initiative, the Business Liaison Officers that work through the Business Hub. Also our Small Business Roundtable, which Councillor Adams chairs for me. Our Village Precinct Projects, which invests in those suburban areas to give them a lift and, once again, help support small business.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, eight wooden ferries will be sold off by the end of this month by your LMP administration. In 2021, you said you had received a financial contribution from Transdev of $4 million. You said, and I quote, "That is in our bank account as we speak and that will be used to commence the repairs on the vessels in our fleet" a year ago. You are now claiming that your LMP administration doesn't have enough money to repair our publicly owned ferries.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Deputy.
Is there a question?
I think there's a question coming, Deputy Mayor.
What have you done with the $4 million council received from Transdev for the repair of these boats? Or did you never receive it?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, I think Councillor Cassidy should actually take the time to understand the service contract that was in place with the former operator, because that contract, like many of our contracts that we enter into, has a bond or security arrangement in place to ensure that assets that are operated by others are handed back at the end of the contract in what we believe is an appropriate state. And if that asset or those assets are not handed back in an appropriate state, then we can call on that security bond. Now, that is exactly what happened. Now, that security bond was for all of the fleet and including all of the ferry terminals. All of the ferry terminals, all of the fleet, including City Cats, including, yes, they do, including, well, he doesn't even know some basic things about what the contract for City Cat and ferry operations do.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
Now, Mr Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate for the leathery opposition to call me a fool, but that is what he has just done.
Councillor Cassidy, please. Oh, Councillor Cassidy, enough.
And so what has happened here is we have assessed all of the assets that were managed and controlled by the previous operator and the state that they were handed back in. And I can tell you, the degradation that occurred to a whole range of assets was in excess of $4 million. And so we did take that security bond and that security bond has been invested on appropriate repairs and that will continue to be the case. But this has nothing to do with flood damage. This all happened before the floods. And so Councillor Cassidy should take the time to understand basic facts about how contracts work.
Councillor Cassidy?
We made it very clear though, that the wooden ferry fleet was not in a safe condition to have on the water. We have carried out further investigations. And Councillor Cassidy also is aware that we prepared a business case on the repair of the ferries. The business case... Councillor Cassidy obviously doesn't want to hear the end.
Further questions? Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, Councillor Davis. In recent weeks, the Shrima Council has opened a number of brand new parks for Brisbane residents. Could you please update the chamber on these projects, including how they encourage communities to embrace Brisbane's parks and vibrant outdoor lifestyle?
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, I'd like to thank Councillor Adaman for the question. Mr Chair, Brisbane's network of parks brings the natural world into the heart of our city and they are part of what makes Brisbane a fantastic place to work, live, relax and raise a family. And that's why this year, the Shrima Council is investing more than $243 million into parks, sporting fields and green space to further encourage our residents and visitors to be out and enjoying Brisbane's great outdoor lifestyle. But the days of the run of the mill parks and playgrounds are gone and through design and upgrades, we are meeting the diverse recreational needs of our residents, including those who enjoy getting around on two or four wheels. And Councillor Adaman knows first hand how popular wheeled activities have become. Last month, the Lord Mayor and Councillor Adaman officially opened the refurbished Booker Place Skate Park, which now provides a combination of street and transitional styles that cater for beginner and intermediate skaters. Councillor Adaman informs me that the current skate park is extremely popular with young people and families and the new design will encourage even more people to come down and learn how to skate. From the western suburbs to Lothar in the east, an upgrade to the Ed Devonport Skate Park is now complete, with works including a new ramp and skate obstacles, wide plaza steps for easy access, a new water fountain and a new basketball practice court. It looks fantastic. For the two wheeled enthusiasts, we are also building new scooter tracks based on the design of the very popular scooter track at Bradbury Park in Kedron. The Lord Mayor recently visited the new scooter track at Shaftesbury... I saw the pictures. I saw you on the scooter. It was. So invited at Shaftesbury Street Park in Tarragindy and he showed off very skillfully his own scooter skills by having a bit of a ride along the track. Such is the success of the programme, council will build a further three scooter tracks and they'll be at Paul Conti Park in Hemant, Kathleen Street Park in Richlands and Watonga Park, the gap later this year. Mr Chair, also nearing completion is the new off-road skills track at DM Henderson Park at McGregor. This project is delivered as part of the Brisbane Off-Road Cycling Strategy and it features a track constructed from compacted earth, decomposed granite and other natural materials. This new facility provides something for everyone and will encourage our next generation of mountain bikers to hone their skills in a safe environment. I know Councillor Huang is very excited about this new opening. A Chan Street Park in Stafford, which is also identified in the Off-Road Cycling Strategy, now has a new bike skills track, along with improvements to the skate half pipe, picnic shelters and additional parking and the kids are loving it. Mr Chair, adjacent to the Chan Street Park is Greenstead Park, which is a popular destination both for locals and for visitors across Brisbane. And it was wonderful to join the Lord Mayor and Councillor Wines to celebrate the reopening of this park's precinct with the community. And it was fantastic to see how excited the children were, checking out the new features of the playground and they included the new play tower, the timber teepee, musical flowers and discovery trails. And families were also making use of the enhanced picnic and barbecue facilities with accessibility improved across the park. This was a fantastic project, well worth the $3.3 million investment, servicing a great number of local families. And as I said, it's a destination park for many Brisbane residents. Another one of the opportunities that we are very invested in is our ninja courses. They provide much more than your typical fitness equipment. It's more about strength, endurance, balance, flexibility and some friendly competition. A councillor, Toomey, recently joined me in opening the first of three new exciting new ninja courses across the city, with construction wrapping up on the course at Terelba Park in Everton Park. And based on the successful ninja course in St Lucia at Guyat Park, the course at Terelba Park has 11 obstacles, including jungle bars, the plank, the quin steps and the big fling. And I think the quin steps was the particular item that councillor Toomey decided to have a bit of a go at. It was quite good. Two other courses will be constructed in Whitesill Reserve, Camp Hill and Dalton Street Park in Callanvale and they are expected to be completed by mid-September in 2022. Mr Chair, you remis of me not to mention our district level sporting facilities that contribute to building an active and healthy lifestyle. That includes at Wally Tate Park, at Heathwood Park in Heathwood with a new amenities facility. It's been great working with councillor Owen and of course...
Thank you, Councillor Davis. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Saranganathan?
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the Mayor. Lord Mayor, I was obviously pleased earlier this year when you introduced the new ratings category for transitory accommodation to target Airbnb and other similar properties. I wonder if you could give us a bit of an update on this. How many properties have been identified as fitting under that ratings category? So how many transitory accommodation properties are actually paying that higher rates levy? And what particular proactive steps are your officers taking to investigate or identify additional transitory accommodation properties?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question. The new category obviously has certain conditions attached to it. And one of those conditions is that the property has to be listed for in excess of 60 days as a short term accommodation property. And so for many properties that are rented out on a periodic basis, like not every single night, it'll take some time for them to trigger that threshold. Also, we've exempted people that are just renting out one single bedroom, because that is a different thing altogether. And so effectively, it will take some time before this scheme gears up. We made that clear right from the beginning. And we wanted this scheme to be fair as well. And so what we'll be doing in terms of the path forward is making sure that the community continues to be educated on what the rules are, what the conditions are. But also, we'll be getting access to any data sources that we can to identify properties that might fit into this new category. So we are not solely relying on the self-declaration process. We are taking our own steps as well to identify properties that may fit into this new category. Obviously, we encourage owners of properties that rent them out on the short term market to self-declare. That is obviously our preferred step. But we will be taking our own actions to make sure that we know and we identify properties that may fit into this category that may not have self-declared as well. So trust but verify is the approach going forward. And we will be verifying. We will be verifying, because we know that it is important to get as many properties right now back into the longer term rental market. And that is something that our policy is focused on. It's been great to see in recent times, a lot of other councils starting the discussion on this issue. Until this point in time, it was Noosa that had initiated a system. Obviously, Noosa is a holiday destination. It is different to Brisbane. You know, there is a large number of privately owned properties that are rented on the short term market and it's very seasonal. They did that scheme for a particular reason, as a holiday destination. We are, as far as I'm aware, the first large city that's done this on a big scale. And so it will take time to get this system up and running. But I don't think there's too many people in the community that don't know about this now. It received a lot of attention immediately after the budget, generated a lot of debate, admittedly some for and some against. But we are doing this for a very deliberate reason, to make sure that there is, wherever possible, property is being put back into the long term rental market. But we're also doing this in terms of an equity issue for the rate payers of Brisbane. And that equity issue is that if you use your property for a commercial purpose, then you should contribute commercial rates to support the running of the city. And I don't think too many people would think that's unfair. You know, that principle exists for every other commercial kind of operation that happens. If you suddenly start running a business at your home, then your rates go up. Your rates go to a commercial rate. By the same token, people that operate those commercial activities do have tax reductions and tax deductions that they can make on those properties as well. So this is a fair and reasonable, I guess, approach that we've taken. It will continue to gear up over the coming period of months. I'll be sure to provide updates as we get more information. But I just did want to reassure Councillor Sri Ranganathan that, did I say it right?
Yep.
That we are not just relying on people to self-nominate. There are other mechanisms that we have in place to identify properties that may fit into this category and also to verify. And we also have been having a lot of helpful feedback from residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Huang?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrima Council has a strong track record investing funds to upgrade roads, allowing residents to get home sooner and safer. Could you please update the chamber on the latest completed project for Brisbane's south side?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you in particular to councillor Huang for his question. I appreciate his keen interest to ensure that the roads of the south side operate in a safe and efficient manner, not only for his own residents but for all nearby residents as well. The Newham and Weka intersection has been one that has reached practical completion recently, but for a pedestrian bridge which we're in the process of building at the moment. The councillors may know this location as that intersection at Mount Gravat near the Bunnings. That's actually the easiest way to describe which one it is, and that's the way most people identify it. So it is one of the projects that we've delivered through a partnership with the federal government through their Urban Congestion Fund, which has been a provision to our city of more than half a billion dollars to ensure that we can deliver road upgrades across the city to make the road, our road network safer and more efficient and to get people home sooner and safer. There's a whole range of projects that fit into the category of the UCF that are like Newman Weka, similarly Mogul Road, Beams Road, Norris Road, among others. The project was identified by a series of local councillors, and in partnership with Mr Ross Vasta, they secured, the federal government offered $12 million to the council to upgrade this particular intersection, which all support is gratefully accepted to improve our network. So thank you to the federal government there. The intersection was a signalised T-intersection filtered right turns into Newham, from Newham, I should say, into Weka, with pedestrian crossings on the eastern and southern legs. However, no pedestrian protection provided for left and right turning vehicles. Newham Road is classified arterial, and three other arterial roads are nearby as part of the nearby cycle network. Weka Road is a two-way, four-lane road that starts at Mansfield, is adjacent to the M1, and Newham Road is a Mount Gravat East base road. Carrying about 35,000 vehicles per day, 474 buses, 55 cyclists and 186 pedestrians each and every day indicate how busy this particular intersection is and how much traffic of all varieties does move through it. Traffic surveys conducted, as well as feedback from the community, informed us that the intersection was experiencing substantial congestion, particularly during peak traffic flows, and also the school drop-off, both in the morning and afternoon. The high volume of traffic on Newham Road made it difficult for vehicles to make a safe right turn from Newham into Weka, which was also a major prompt for the project. Between March 2014 and March 2019, there were 18 reported crashes at the intersection, and 13 of these crashes were related to motorists being unable to make that safe right turn discussed a moment ago. I want to acknowledge that those were the reported crashes as distinct from unreported crashes and near misses, which do not inform a part of this, but are well-known to the community. One of the reasons that we reach out to local residents for feedback is something that was discussed in committee very recently as well. The intersection was forecast to exceed capacity in the very near future if no upgrade were to take place, creating significant congestion and queuing length increases, with a maximum queue length predicted to be more than 1.3 kilometres on Weka Road itself. Our council finalized the detailed design for the project in March 2021, and the project itself commenced in November of 2021, with stage one of the main roadworks completed in July 22. That pedestrian bridge is still being constructed at the moment, and we expect a ribbon-cutting on the bridge in the early parts of 2023, weather permitting. I'd like to just go on and further say how much we've appreciated at this organisation, how much we appreciate the support of the federal government's Urban Congestion Fund. We identify that there has been a change in government, and that may mean a change in priorities from the federal government. However, I must once again reiterate the importance of the federal government's support, to ensuring that our road network continues to be upgraded in a timely manner, and that, as I discussed earlier, not only do we cater for motor vehicles, but also buses, pedestrians and cyclists can be catered to all-in-one project. I often make the case that people will say we need improved public transport, and I must remind people, buses go on roads. And so there has to be an availability and space for those buses to move around the system if we are to have an improved multi-modal traffic and transport system. So once again, I just wanted to thank the federal government for their support. I suppose what I'm saying is I'm calling on them that if they are considering the future of the UCF to please maintain it so that we can continue to deliver.
Councillor Wines, thank you. Your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy?
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in recent weeks, you have claimed your LMP administration is doing enough to address our city's housing crisis. You often talk about council's Community Housing Partnership Project as the main way your LMP administration is acting. Today, we find out that last year, just 82 people were housed through this programme, and you have more golf course offices than homelessness offices employed in council. So, Lord Mayor, will you finally now support Labour's plans to partner with community housing providers through direct funding, infrastructure charge discounts and streamline approvals to address this citywide problem, rather than just saying someone else should do it?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Well, I'm a bit confused because councillor Cassidy referred to Labour's plans. Is anyone aware of any Labour plans for anything? We know that they're just very negative. They love to attack other people. They love to criticise. They spend their time making memes on social media. But they don't actually have any plans. They never have had any plans, which is why they are over there, Mr Chair.
Councillor Strunk?
And they also will never ever criticise anything that's happening up at George Street, even if it is diabolical, even if it is hurting Queenslanders, even if it is making sure there's a situation where there are 50,000 people on the public or social housing waiting list. They won't say a word about that. And.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
We know that Labour has suggested that people should be sleeping on the floor in warehouses without toilets. And that's what they have suggested. That's what they have suggested.
Councillor Cassidy, excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I've warned you several times already during this meeting. I don't mind going, I will go to the formal's if you continue to disrupt this meeting. If asked a question, listen to it in silence, please. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We know that Labour, let me correct the record, that Labour thinks it's okay for people to sleep on blow-up mattresses on the floor in warehouses without toilets. That is, the only thing that I can come close to suggesting is a plan that Labour has put forward. And they're quite happy to have them in the signal box on, you know, out at Moreton Island. They're quite happy to have them in buildings that are completely not suitable or not fit for human habitation.
Councillor Strunk?
And so, and they reject and criticise a suggestion to open up 1,000 beds near the Brisbane Airport. 1,000 actual beds with toilets, with a roof, with safety and security. They rejected that suggestion, yet they think it is okay to have people on blow-up mattresses on the floor in warehouses and other buildings that are not suitable for habitation. And so if there is a reason why there were 82 people helped, it's because there's 82 suitable properties that we might have made available. Suitable properties. We don't think that warehouses are suitable for people to be living in. We don't think parks are suitable for people to be living in.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
I specifically talked about three proposals in my question, Chair. Direct funding, infrastructure charge discounts and streamlined approval processes through Development Services. The Lord Mayor is not answering that part of the question. It's a yes or no. Does he support it or not?
Councillor Cassidy, you asked a broad question about community housing. The Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
I'm not aware of any plan that Labour has, Mr Chair. And so, look, I guess it's an interesting question. But what I have already flagged is that I'm happy to look for opportunities where Labour councillors can lead by example, such as councillor Cassidy himself in Sandgate, where until recently, he was opposing an extra storey in Sandgate. An extra storey. One storey extra. And remember, he ran a big campaign in the last election in going from four stories to six stories. We then compromised and went to five stories, and he still wasn't happy with that. He still wasn't happy with that. And so what we see here, what we see here is someone who opposes development in his local area and then complains that there's a housing issue. There's a housing affordability and supply issue. It is unbelievable. It is unbelievable. And they squeal really loudly when they're called out on this. But the reality is, if you oppose neighbourhood plans right across the city, and we know that Labour has opposed 14 out of 16 neighbourhood plans.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
I asked about providing direct funding to community housing providers, providing infrastructure charge discounts to community housing providers, and streamlining the approval process to community housing providers. I'm not talking about neighbourhood plans. I'm not talking about a lock-up quarantine facility over Pinkenbar. The Lord Mayor needs to answer my question.
Point of order now, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, if I could bring you back to the specific question, which is about community housing.
Well, I wonder where these community housing providers are going to build anything, because Labour opposes any kind of new development in their areas. So I don't know where these new homes are going to go. It's almost as ludicrous as the Greens' policy of building a million new homes. Where? Where? They haven't identified any locations, and certainly not in local places like West End where they oppose development. Where are these places going to be built? You can talk about schemes to throw money at the problem, but where are they going to be built? Until councillor Cassidy identifies suitable sites, then we can see his question as just politicking.
That's right.
Politicking, politicking, because obviously he doesn't want any kind of extra development or new development.
Councillor Cassidy, please. Lord Mayor is providing an answer to the question.
And so, look, we know every week in this place, councillor Cassidy asks a question. He doesn't like the response, and he squeals and squirms and interrupts and yells out and calls names. So it's business as usual, but the reality is, he's been called out on his hypocrisy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor MacKay?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council's Popular Cube Effect is now taking applications for the 2023 year. Could you please update the chamber on how upcoming musos can apply, including some of the success that has been borne from this programme?
Thank you. Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thanks councillor MacKay for the question. We had a presentation about the Cube Effect in our committee meeting this morning, and as I mentioned, then it is one of my favourite events of council. So it is an initiative that I'm extremely proud to deliver as the Civic Cabinet Chair for Community Arts and Nighttime Economy. And I've had the immense privilege of seeing so many young Brisbane artists benefit from the programme since Cube Effect was established by the Shriner Council. In the past seven years, we have seen more than 180 young emerging Brisbane artists benefit from the incredible opportunities presented by the Cube Effect, which has helped many award-winning Brisbane artists launch successful music careers. Last year, six Cube Effect alumni were recognised as finalists in the 2021 Queensland Music Awards, with Psycho winning both Song of the Year and the Pop category, and Hope D winning the Rock category. And this year, Psycho won Big Again at the QMA's, winning the Pop category and Song of the Year again. We are incredibly proud to have helped these talented young artists make their way in the music industry. And it is just one of the many success stories of the Cube Effect alumni and what this programme can do to help emerging artists establish themselves in the music industry. And so I'm very excited to announce that applications for next year's Cube Effect programme have now opened. We are calling on the next generation of singers, songwriters and bands to kickstart their music career by applying for the Cube Effect 2023. Cube Effect has a proven track record of unearthing the best new talent and shining a spotlight on the city's diverse music industry. There's no doubt the Cube Effect has played a part in launching the music careers of some truly amazing Brisbane artists. We've watched Cube Effect alumni such as Psycho, Betty Ray's and Hope D go on to make Triple J's Hottest 100 and perform at some of the country's largest music festivals. So if you're a young Brisbane artist looking for your next big break, we want to hear from you. You have until 5pm on the 12th of September to get your application in for the opportunity to become another Brisbane success story. If you're successful, you'll be one of 24 local acts next year to get the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity of working alongside music industry experts, produce your very own music video and hone your live performance skills. As well as being a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to kickstart your music career, next year's finalists will also be in the running to win a swag of great prizes. Last year's winners received cash prizes, photography packages, paid live performances and the chance to play a support gig at a major live music venue. Moondust merchants are on board to deliver the programme in 2023 and are looking forward to seeing the next round of musicians take part. If you're still not convinced, this is what Ben Hobart, lead vocals and guitarist from this year's People's Choice Award winners Flag Duty, had to say about the Cube Effect. Through the programme, we've been able to connect with fellow artists and industry professionals alike, and in doing so, have gained valuable insights. Over the next 12 months, we are hoping to expand our audience and play some shows outside of Brisbane, as well as get our name in some festival line-ups. So there's no sense in waiting. Get into council's website now and search for the Cube Effect to find out more about how you could be Brisbane's next big star. And through you, Mr Chair, we did have a very lively discussion this morning in our committee, and I know that councillor Griffiths, who's not here this afternoon, has many aspiring artists in the Maruk Award that he's looking forward to spreading the word. And if I could ask all of the councillors in the chamber to make sure that they let their residents know about this fantastic opportunity for emerging artists within their own areas to apply. So it is really a fantastic opportunity. And as I've already said, we've had a lot of people who in the past have made a great success from being within the Cube alumni. So it is something that we would really appreciate everybody promoting to the people within their wards. And so we're very much looking forward to seeing some of those performers at Valley Fiesta, at the Brisbane Festival. They were performing when we had the pleasure of announcing the Olympic bid. And so it is opportunities like this, as well as giving them the opportunity to participate in festivals right across Brisbane, that is a great opportunity for our emerging artists to really take the opportunity to be part of this fantastic programme. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Further questions? Councillor Sriranganathan?
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor. Lord Mayor, several years ago, your predecessor Graham Quirk announced as part of the Brisbane's Future Blueprint document that the proportion of space within new developments set aside for deep-planted trees would be increasing. I've asked you about this in the past, and you always say it's coming soon, but it's now been several years. And I guess I'd like to understand why has such a simple change taken so long to implement? And when will you be increasing the deep planting minimums as part of new developments?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you for the question. The requirements on deep planting are something that I am particularly interested in and something that I expect to be not only dealt with through an official amendment, but also through the actions and requests of our officers as they're assessing development. And there's no reason why, through some of our incentive programmes, that applicants for applications can't put forward green buildings, buildings with not only great sustainability ratings in terms of their energy efficiency and reuse of water and various other efficiency measures, but also a high level of deep planting and take advantage of some of our incentive programmes. We have a green building incentive programme underway. But I just find that question quite interesting from councillor Sriranganathan, that is the same councillor who opposed the world's greenest building to be built in his ward. The world's greenest building that was proposed in South Brisbane with 1,000 trees on it, and he ran a local campaign against it, against it. And so it's one thing to, in principle, support these sort of arrangements and these sort of buildings.
Just on the relevance, the question was quite specifically about the deep planting minimum commitment in the Brisbane Future Blueprint document, which said it would start within six months of when this document was released. So I'm asking the mayor, what is the reason for that delay? And when will that deep planting requirement be formally introduced as a strict minimum? And, and when will that deep planting requirement be formally introduced as a strict minimum?
Lord Mayor, if I can bring you to the question, please.
Yeah, the, the, the question was quite specific and my answer is quite specific on the hypocrisy of this question because words are one thing, actions are another thing. And I understand that not only did councillor Sri organise community objections to the world's greenest building in his ward, he's also assisted the local community group in appealing that development.
That's right.
Appealing that development. So he is dead-set against the world's greenest building happening in his ward. It's quite clear. And yet he stands up in here and says that he wants more deep planting. Well, how about a building with a thousand trees on it? How about the world's greenest building being built in Brisbane? And this is, this is a, this is a really interesting example of the Greens and how the Greens think. They say they support these things, but when rubber hits the road, nothing's ever good enough for them. There's nothing is ever good enough for them because their whole party is about voting no. Their whole party is about opposing things. Their whole party is about stopping things, stopping progress, stopping building, stopping new homes being built, not actually what they are going to do. And that's the difference between a party of opposition or a party that might want to jump onto another party like a leech and be a partner in government. But the difference is, this side is a party of administration where we get on and do things. We actually make things happen. We build things. We come up with solutions to problems. The amendment I've asked to come forward, and that is Amendment L, which will be coming through this year. And I look forward to councillor Sri's hearty support for that amendment. We know that when we introduced a recent amendment to support more rooftop gardens, councillor Sri was against that too. He was against that. And that's time and time again, we see one thing he says he supports and then his actions show that he really opposes it. Why? Why? Because he is fundamentally against any kind of private building or, or private housing. He wants a million public houses to be built across Australia. He won't say where. But when it comes to private investment, he's against that. And his actions show that he's against it. So yeah, let's talk about an amendment, councillor Sri. There'll be an amendment coming through. You'll have an opportunity to say whether you support it or not. Let me make a prediction. He'll vote against it because for some reason it won't go far enough or it won't meet his requirements. He wouldn't want to see the world's greenest building in his electorate, in his ward. He would vote against that because fundamentally, that's the approach we have seen from councillor Sri Ranganathan and the Greens time and time again. They oppose things. They are not for things.
Thank you. That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 8th of August 2022, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 8th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 8th of August 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Yes, Mr Chair, before I go on to other items, I wanted to talk about the issue of water security for South East Queensland. I know there's been some coverage in recent days about this issue in the Courier-Mail and I am, I'm really interested to see this debate happening because it needs to happen. It needs to happen. I am left with no doubt that if we see a combination of the continued growth of our population in South East Queensland, together with what we know at some stage in the future will be drought conditions, that we will once again be at risk of running out of water. I have no doubt that that will be a situation that will face us unless we get serious about water security. Now, there's been, you know, I, I guess some people see this as a binary choice. Councillor Sri likes that terminology, a binary choice between recycled water or desalination. Well, look, I can tell you to answer the question that some people don't like to answer. I would drink recycled water, yes I would. And in fact, I have drunk recycled water. I've been to Singapore. I've been to London. The water there is recycled. And in fact, you could easily argue that every single drop of water on this planet is recycled. Most of it is done naturally. There's no more water created. It's all water that has been here for a very long time and continues to get cycled through. So when it comes, when it comes to the science on this, I find it interesting that some people, you know, they'll, they'll trust the science on climate change. They'll trust the science on vaccines, but they won't trust the science on recycled water. And the science says it's safe. It's not a question. The science says it's safe and it's used in many cities and towns around the world. But really, the question that we should ask is not a question that's already been resolved, like that one I just mentioned has been resolved. It is how are we going to make sure that South East Queensland has water security? Is it the construction of a new desalination plant? Is it the construction of new water storage facilities or dams? Is it the use of recycled water or is it a combination of all of these things? The fact is, that debate needs to happen and we can't waste a moment when it comes to this important infrastructure. Now, everyone would be aware that for the last decade or so, on their water bill, there's a nice little charge, actually it's not a little charge, it's a big charge. It's called the bulk water charge. That is a charge that has been charged to all water users by the state government to pay for a very expensive water grid. And from memory, that grid was something like $7 billion. And the tragedy of it all is that a large part of that grid has been deactivated and mothballed and is not being used. We're paying for it. We have been paying for it. The reason people's water bills are so high is because of this infrastructure that was built. Yet no one wants to make the decisions on whether to switch on this water grid or not. We need to have the debate. We need to have a sensible debate. But I don't want to see a situation where Brisbane once again faces the threat of running out of water. There are some things that we can't control. We can't control when floods will come. We can't control when drought happens. But we can control our preparedness to those events. We know we can be better prepared for floods and better resilient, more resilient. We know we can be better prepared for droughts. And in this case, a lot of the infrastructure is already in place. And so I really do commend the media for putting this debate forward. I think it is really an important one, one that has to be resolved because I certainly don't want to see a situation where in 2032, when all of the international visitors are here and we're giving them shower timers at the airport as they arrive and say, welcome to Brisbane, have a great games, three-minute showers only. That is a very real scenario if we don't get our water security sorted out. And so this is something that I think is an exciting and important debate that needs to happen. And certainly, I think as a first step, we need to have a look at the assets that already exist and what assets can be reactivated, what assets that don't exist need to be added to the mix. Our population is growing, not just in Brisbane but right across South East Queensland. And with many more people coming here, we need water security for our region. A lot of other countries and towns have sorted this out. I mentioned Singapore. Singapore is a, an island with very few, if any, natural resources. And in fact, they've acknowledged as a country that number one resource is actually their people. They don't actually have any other natural resources to speak of. And so everything that they've done there is about the security of that small nation and, and making sure that if they don't have water, they initiate infrastructure and water security plans to make sure that their population has enough. And they've done that with water. They've done that with so many other things as well. And if a, if a relatively small island with no natural resources to speak of can sort this out, then we can too. And we should expect that this issue is addressed. Moving on to the lighting up of our assets. Last night, we had all of our assets lit up in white, orange and green to celebrate India Independence Day. And this year was a particularly important milestone for Indians, both locally and around the globe, because it marks seventy-five years of India's independence. And that was a really remarkable transition from British rule into independent rule and one that has been a beacon of democracy on a global scale. Never before have we seen such a large and diverse population successfully transitioned to become a democracy and to remain a democracy. They have 1.3 billion people now in India. It is the world's largest democracy and it is a truly remarkable thing. And to see the progress that that nation has made over the past seventy-five years is being nothing short of remarkable. And we celebrate that progress and we also celebrate the contribution of our local Indian community. And they do a fantastic job in supporting our community and contributing to our community. The, the wonderful community spirit and entrepreneurship that they bring is just really a credit and an addition to our society here in Brisbane. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in red and white to celebrate Indonesia's Independence Day. And Indonesia became independent from the Netherlands seventy-seven years ago. And Indonesia is another wonderful example of a country that has maintained its independence and also has a very large population and in fact, one of the world's largest populations. It's up there in terms of the, the size of the populations on a global scale. So we know that, that China has the most people, India comes in second and Indonesia is right up there with the world's largest populations. And so with a country with thousands of islands, multiple different ethnic and cultural groups, we should also celebrate the independence of what is our nearest large neighbour, Indonesia. On Friday night, all of our assets will be lit up black and red and green to recognise Afghanistan's Independence Day. And this light-up is also one that we do with a touch of sadness as well because it was only just a year ago that we saw the fall of Afghanistan and in particular Kabul to the Taliban. An event which saw thousands and thousands of people fleeing the country. An event which saw, in particular, Afghanistan's women now facing the, the situation where they don't have equal rights, they don't have equal opportunities and are sadly by the Taliban treated as second-class citizens. And so I'm very proud that we now have a significant contingent of Afghan residents living here in Queensland. And I'm also proud that the federal government was able to accommodate and open up Australia's doors to a significant number of Afghan refugees coming after the fall of Kabul. And so we light up the assets to celebrate the Independence Day, but we also light up the assets to support our local Afghan community who have been through significant hardship in recent times.
Your time has expired.
Move an extension?
Seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
And finally, on Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up purple and blue for the Queensland Law Society Gala Awards, which will be held here in the main auditorium of City Hall. Last Friday, the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust hosted a fundraising lunch with approximately six hundred attendees. Unfortunately, well, actually probably fortunately, the, the men in the crowd were significantly outnumbered. I think on a, on a scale of probably about thirty to one. But it was a great fundraising lunch and it was all about supporting two charities that do an amazing work in their response to cancer and specifically breast cancer as well. Those charities are Mummy's Wish and Be Uplifted. They do a wonderful job. And yes, last Friday's lunch was all about bringing the community together. We had the amazing fashion designer Camilla with us and she launched her latest, I guess, season. And it was a great opportunity to get together and raise money for what is a wonderful cause. And so I want to thank the Lady Meress, I want to thank Dykeant, I want to thank Danielle Harris. I want to thank all of the sponsors of that event. And I particularly want to thank the, the staff in my office upstairs who supported the running of this event. Because we know with the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust that it is a situation where when you donate to the trust, that money doesn't go on administration costs. That money goes towards supporting other charities. And that is made possible by the efforts of the many staff who make these events possible. And so they are council employees, but they, they do this to support the charity and to make sure that the costs of running these events come down and that more money can be directed towards the great charitable causes. We also had on the weekend the India Day Fair. And I want to thank councillor McLaughlin, councillor Howard, councillor Owen, councillor Strunk and councillor Cassidy who were also in attendance. It was great to see good bipartisan representation at that event. And it, it was a wonderful event in the Roma Street Parklands to celebrate the seventy-fifth, seventy-five years of Indian independence. In the contracts and tendering report for us, as I mentioned before, we have a really strong local buy component. And in fact, thirty out of the thirty-seven contracts coming forward in this particular report, or eighty-one percent of contracts, going to local South East Queensland businesses. In the last, in the last financial year, there've been more than five hundred and thirty contracts awarded to local companies, eighty-three percent of the total contracts and more than $1.1 billion worth of investment. Some of the interesting or notable contracts coming through include the Brisbane Metro Management System and System Integration. This is the, effectively the technical support for running the, the metro system. Now, the metro system includes not just the vehicles and not just the infrastructure work that needs to be facilitated at such as the Adelaide Street Tunnel, the Cultural Centre Station, the upgraded suburban stations, the depot at Rochedale, but also the IT to make it all work, which is a really important part of the process. Because in these vehicles, we will have turn-up-and-go services that include IT that you do not see in our existing fleet. That will include next-stop notification, just as you see in some of the train or metro services around the world. You will be able to see on an electronic display what is the next station coming up. You will be able to see the route map. You will be able to hear announcements, in fact, on what those stations are. And all of this will be happening in real time and be updated in real time. You also see a situation where you have free wifi available on the, on the metro vehicles. And you see, you will see also a continuation of our USB charging points, which is something that we have rolled out on existing bus fleet as well as new buses, ferries and metros. We had a great response to the Brisbane Metro Pilot Vehicle at the ECA and more than fifteen thousand people stepped onto the vehicle, which was just wonderful. And they were very excited to see it. And I know there's some metro detractors in this room, but certainly the people of Brisbane were very, very interested in seeing it and very positive about it as well. And so we, we appreciated the interest of the community in this project. We also have some contracts coming through for ferry terminal flood repair. And these works included, and just remember this is retrospective that we're talking about here, so work is already underway, including silt removal from the gangways, repairs to the terminals like roofing, fencing and glass balustrades, testing for whether there was any cracks in the terminals that needed to be fixed or welded. And those works are currently underway. We're looking forward to getting the next tranche of terminals up and running as well as soon as possible and that work is happening in earnest. Item B is the policy, the procurement plan and policy. This, sorry, the procurement policy and plan. The document comes through every year. By the nature of this document, it must come through after the budget. And so the budget needs to be released and then this plan comes through after the budget comes out. To talk about... comes out to talk about, I guess, the processes under which this budget investment will be made. And I've already mentioned, it includes things like the local buy and the local procurement. Also, we're continuing to increase our investment with social enterprise. We know that also some people in this chamber think that everything should be done in-house. And we don't just work with local businesses, we also work with social enterprise as well. And if you did everything in-house, you wouldn't be able to work with social enterprises either, who do a fantastic job. And so we've increased the target once again this year to 10 million. And we continue to see a capacity building in the industry for social enterprise. When we first started going out for procurement, there was a relatively small number of organisations that put their hand up. And we've progressively seen an increase in the number of organisations but also their capacity to deliver. And so we've started off with organisations like Help Enterprises, who manufacture the bin enclosures, they do a great job. And then we've seen other opportunities like Multana, who do a range of bus cleaning and other cleaning activities for us. We see social enterprises like the Lovewell Cafe up on Mount Grabat Mountain, which is a wholly social enterprise where they train women escaping domestic violence, drug addiction or the sex industry to give them job skills so that they can get out of that situation they're in and have a sustainable job, I guess, career going forward. And we've seen already so many women helped through that cafe, which is just a wonderful example. So it's not just one of the best spots in Brisbane or the best views in Brisbane. When you have a coffee there or a meal there, you're actually helping people get out of what is a dire situation, and it's just a wonderful thing. So we're also seeking to remove barriers to procuring goods and services from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander businesses. And so this is something that we're really keen to gear up. And we've added a new section into our procurement plan and policy in terms of dealing with climate change or addressing climate change to make sure that as we're working through procurement, that climate change is fundamentally a consideration in the things that we do. And we're seeing some really great things happen, both within council and externally, that we can take advantage of. Already, we use a lot of recycled materials in the projects that we do. When we're resurfacing a road, we don't just throw away the scrapings from the road, we actually process them and then we put them back into roads again. We're also trialling crushed up or rubber tyres, ground up rubber tyres, to be part of the bitumen mix, use of recycled materials. We use crushed up glass as a sand substitute in some of our products, such as concrete footpaths. And so we want to really increase the amount of recycled materials going into our building and construction activities to really support the circular economy. I was recently out at Pinkham Bar, no, yeah, it was Pinkham Bar with councillor McLaughlin, where we were at the launch of an exciting new recycling plant from Rhino Recycling. We already send a lot of material to that recycling facility, but they're gearing it up to be fully automated and to be able to accommodate a much wider range of construction and demolition waste. So if you're demolishing a building, if you're demolishing existing infrastructure, you can send it to Rhino Recycling.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, the timer hasn't been working unfortunately, but I am keeping a highly sophisticated backup clock here.
That's right, I'm just going to be brief, I'd sort of almost finished. So if you've got a demolition project, you can send that material to a place like Rhino Recycling. That material can be processed and then it can be transformed into effectively raw materials for use in new building and construction projects. When I was there, or when we were there, Mr Chair, we saw an incredibly large pile of dirt. And I was told that that was our dirt. I'm like, okay, where did that dirt come from? And that was the dirt that was cleaned up during the flood. So all of the dirt and mud that came off the bikeways, all of the dirt and mud that came off the parks and footpaths and roads, it went there. They are going to process it and that dirt will be reused. Obviously, some of that dirt was contaminated. There's some nasty things that float around in floodwater, including raw sewage. So it couldn't be used without processing, but that's what entities like Rhino Recycling do. So they take all types of what other people would see as waste, they process it, they recycle it, and they make it available for use in new projects to offset the use of new raw materials. And so in our procurement policy, we want to make better advantage of those sort of initiatives which help us address climate change in a very active or proactive way. Mr Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll speak on both of these items before us today and to start with contracts and tendering. And the Lord Mayor talks big when it comes to supporting local suppliers and buying from local businesses. We heard him through Question Time, we heard him again now through E&amp;C talk about that. But when you look at this contracting report before us for June 2022, of the 37 suppliers, only 11 are Brisbane businesses. Five are from South East Queensland, albeit outside of Brisbane, 20 headquartered interstate and one's an overseas company. So much for the Brisbane local buy policy coming through. The single biggest contract for this lot before us today is the $25 million for software to run the Brisbane Metro Bus Project. Again, that's being sourced from a multinational company. Contract number seven's an interesting one to me because this one was raised with me when I was out at Palara having a public meeting. Councillor Strunk and I were out there recently having a public meeting with Palara and a lot of local residents' heads were turned because the local councillor, councillor Angela Owen, had a very large banner sign on some banner poles that she had installed with her face all over it, saying and stating on there that she was personally upgrading local parks, all that local park there. And what we found out, of course, was that it was the car park. There was the car park for the cricket club at that location. And from what I understand, this is SEF funding as well, so 75% of that local SEF funding, which is, according to the Lord Mayor, supposed to go on footpaths. Every time we raise that, he says you should be spending all that SEF money on footpaths. We see out there in Columbar Woods, 75% and probably more, from what I understand, probably a fair bit more, once there's some details of this project need to be worked out, will be used for that car park. So not spending it, even if you didn't want to spend it on footpaths out there, which there is a desperate need for, it's also a desperate need for safe crossing points, for pram rants, for mid-block crossings, for bus stops out in that community. But no, we have an administration here that clearly at the top from the Lord Mayor is not providing enough in capital funding for our community sporting clubs, like we see out here at Heathwood. But we also have a local council that's not prioritising basic services in her ward with the small paltry amount that the Lord Mayor allocates for footpaths and park upgrades. Contract 14 is the Brisbane Metro Bus Management System and System Integration. So another large piece of capital expenditure required because this Lord Mayor decided he wanted to buy Bendy buses from overseas, so they looked a bit like trains instead of supporting local manufacturing here in Brisbane. This administration's clearly embarrassed by more cost blowouts on this Metro Bus Project and hiding the figure, splitting it up in the IT system to manage these buses and classifying it as commercial in confidence to keep it a secret. If they're not embarrassed by this enormous figure, they certainly should be. It is an eye-watering amount of money for an IT system that is required because of a political decision that this Lord Mayor made to purchase some special buses that looked a bit like trains that don't integrate with our busway system. It is a huge amount of money. We know the budget for this overall is $25 million in the line item there, so why can't Brisbane residents be told how much of that this LNP administration is contracting out on this one single IT project for the metro? When it comes to this Metro Bus Project, this administration, this LNP administration, is trying to keep its cost blowouts and its incompetence under wraps and trying to hide these details along the way is actually quite outrageous. Residents deserve transparency when it comes to a project that we have already seen blowout from $944 million to $1.7 billion and counting. If this LNP mayor didn't spend the up to $300 million that he announced he would on those 60 Swiss-made Bendy buses and instead support the manufacture and development of locally-made electric articulated buses, which can be built today if he wanted, out at Eagle Farm, we wouldn't have that enormous cost for those buses, which is three times higher than locally manufactured buses, and we wouldn't have this enormous IT contract before us today as well costing up to $25 million in the long run. If this administration had actually prioritised local manufacturing, you know, we've heard throughout the week that industry leaders are saying there's a high premium on Australian manufacturing, we should do everything we can to support it. Brisbane residents right around the suburbs are saying they support local manufacturing and the long-term jobs that they create in the suburbs of Brisbane. But we have an LNP administration here that prioritises buying these Bendy buses from Europe because they looked a bit like a train, which costs all China for the electric buses on trial at the moment. So we have this incredible situation where not only are we not supporting, under this LNP administration, the long-term job creation, local manufacturing that people put a high premium on, but we're also seeing these added additional costs, which this administration will do everything, everything they can to hide in the long run. Contract 15's the Luminate Nightwalks Light Show in the Botanic Gardens. This is the license to occupy $1 million plus 1% of ticket revenue, $1 per ticket is the contract. You know, we think these shows are fantastic, it's a great way to activate our public spaces like this. But when you have a Lord Mayor and administration saying we can't spend money on the basics, we have to cancel active transport projects, we have to flog off, you know, delay action on repairing roads and parks after the flood, we are flogging off our publicly-owned ferries because this administration doesn't have enough money, and there's $1 million for this. If we can find $1 million for this, which we support, we should be finding money for the basics. It is inconceivable that you can find $1 million for a light show but not $4 million to protect and preserve our publicly-owned river ferries before us today. This is all about priorities. Again, that's on clear display for us today. Contract 17's for a one-music licence. This is an important one, it's something we absolutely support, it's a $546,000 lump sum. We know that this LNP administration has some particularly bad history with the music industry. They tried to rip off a Brisbane band song for a certain TV advertising campaign, you might remember that one in the lead-up to the last election, I believe. This administration has a track record of ripping off Brisbane artists. Let's hope with this contract before us today that they have learnt their lesson on that and will be properly paying for and properly supporting Brisbane artists and their music. Clause B's the Procurement Plan 2022-23. There's a couple of items that jumped out for me here and there, the changes that have been brought for the procurement plan for this year. B 2.2 is addressing climate changes in there and it talks about ethical procurement approach addressing climate change on page 11. We know that this council is only carbon neutral because this administration buys carbon credits and they get them from overseas, places like China as well, through projects that flood gorges and villages and things like that. We think this administration relies too heavily on foreign carbon offset credits and we should be seeing everything done to generate carbon credits here in Brisbane. Our city is not carbon neutral because we have an administration here in council that refuses to divert organic waste from landfill. We have an administration who planned on, for the foreseeable future, continuing to buy diesel buses instead of converting our fleet to electric buses. We should be rolling out a full FOGO system across the suburbs and selling carbon credits to other councils and other people not buying overseas carbon credits. The final one I'll talk about is the C.3 market assessments. This is the impacts of gutting the council workforce, of contracting our jobs to labour hire. Here it talks about in the contracting plan market assessments on page 22, about the negative impacts on COVID on administration, labour hire workers and increased demand for skilled trade workers due to an increase on building and infrastructure impacts on trade labour supply.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has just about expired. Move for an extension?
Seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time moved by councillor Strunk and councillor Cumming. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Thanks very much, Chair. So that was a long title that's found in the contracting plan, but what that means, what that means practically for the people of Brisbane is a legacy of this LNP administration gutting our workforce. This council is now struggling to find people to work for council. I don't mean work in council, I mean do work for council. This is the work that we're talking about that's being contracted out, labour hire companies being engaged to provide workers to do basic works in council. We understand the availability of labour hire workers has been negatively impacted through COVID, but instead, instead of providing secure jobs for ongoing work, I'm not talking about bringing every single thing, like the Lord Mayor likes to say in his very glib comments, about every single thing coming back into council, what we're talking about is council's basic works. In doing the things that people expect their council to do, when they pay their rates, they expect basic maintenance to be provided, they don't expect council then go engage a whole heap of labour hire companies to get temporary workers on to work a day here or a day there, doing things like potholes and footpath work and tree trimming and quarry work for our road resurfacing and all that kind of stuff. This LNP administration has hollowed out council's workforce for the last 20 years while they have been in power, and this is putting community projects at risk now. We are seeing the results out in the suburbs of this ongoing plan of this LNP administration over the last two decades to continue to contract out and hollow out council's work. We see it time and time again with poorly planned projects, with delays on projects, with blowouts on projects and projects that have to be scrapped altogether. This latest procurement plan before us today shows how vulnerable council is now because of this continued reliance on labour hire workers. It's there in black and white. And what is this administration's plan for that? Continue to engage labour hire workers. They want to do the same thing over and over again and see the cost to rate payers skyrocket in terms of financial cost for these contracts to contract out and more contracting out that we see come through here all the time, and the rising costs of those projects themselves. It hurts Brisbane residents, it hurts rate payers, we're seeing higher rates because of it, and it hurts Brisbane workers because, again, they are kept on tenterhooks when they can see it is ongoing basic council work, but they are employed through a third-party employer, working alongside someone that might have tenure at council and desperately want to get that, and are denied because of the political decisions of this LNP administration. Which brings me to an observation that we are realising more and more with this administration when you see their track record on display, that at a council level, this LNP administration is no different to an LNP government at a state or a federal level. They are all cut from the same cloth. Rather than providing secure, well-paid jobs for ongoing council work, they'd rather contract them out to insecure labour hire companies.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to just talk to E&amp;C item A, the contracts and tendering report. And just before I get stuck into the minutia of the report, just to come back to some of the outrageous claims that councillor Cassidy was just making then about council struggling, you know, to be able to get employees. Chair, the only team that I see that really struggles to get good people to work for them is the council labour opposition, okay? Now, under councillor Cumming, they used to have a strong, dedicated, united team, but under councillor Cassidy, a revolving door of people serving a team that is fighting in amongst themselves that cannot come up and develop any policy.
Councillor Murphy, to the report.
A team that is riven with discontent.
Councillor Murphy. To, 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 councillor Murphy, to the report, please.
Sure, Chair. Look, just on item A, contracts and tendering report for June. Councils will know that we have worked with Fitzgerald Construction across a range of projects in council in the last several years. They are known to us. So this is the ferry terminal flood recovery. Works at our traditional ferry terminals, not the, the ones with the swing gangway. So of particular note is Fitzgerald's work in riverine marine environments. They've got a great and proven track record on projects like the Indrapili Riverwalk and as subcontractors on our Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. It's exciting that they're joining us once again. As outlined in my committee report last week, we are continuing to get on with the job of recovering our ferry terminal network following the February flood. Our ferry infrastructure had various levels of damage across terminals, mooring and refuelling facilities. We know that eight of the twenty eleven flood recovery program terminals were significantly impacted by that event. And as I mentioned last week, we didn't lose any terminals unlike in twenty eleven. So the recovery effort here is limited to repair work rather than rebuilding the terminals or substantial reconstruction. So this contract represents repairs to the fourteen flood damaged traditional ferry terminals. Now, the scope of works includes silt removal from within the articulated gangways, repairs to the various external panels, replacement of flood damaged components, including anodes, roofing, fencing, glass balustrades and restoration of various paintworks. And many councillors have taken a trip on our partially restored ferry network lately. You know, you'll notice as you pass the other terminals on the river, the state that some of them in. These are not major structural issues, but there are just a real laundry list of repairs that need to happen to them. So for example, works to the West End Terminal include non destructive crack testing of welds throughout the gangway to determine the level of well repairs required and to confirm other repair strategy assumptions with other terminals. The Thornton Street Terminal, we know is no longer required for services and that will be partly demolished as part of this package of work, removing all of the river based elements, including the pontoon, the gangway, the restraint piles and other items that are in the river and on the riverbed for navigational safety reasons. Cost of works under this package include part demolition of the Thornton Street Terminal is anticipated to be recovered through the insurance process. We also have Chair in here, the, the B M M S S, the Brisbane Metro Management System and the systems integration package, which has been awarded to Indra Australia. Now, Chair, Indra, Indra Australia is a subsidiary of Indra Systems or Indra Systems S A, a listed Spanish information technology and defence systems company. They have interests in amongst other things, Chair, air traffic control systems, ticketing systems that they develop for rapid transit projects around the world, including those such as Madrid, Barcelona, Paris, Lisbon, Shanghai, Athens, Buenos Aires, Mumbai and Santiago. They're also in financial services, energy, aircraft simulators, defence, a range of other concerns, Chair. And look, without breaching commercial in confidence, councillors can clearly see from the tender evaluation that is in the documents here that Indra were overwhelmingly the clear choice for council to procure this package of work from. And unlike the blatant lies that the leader of the opposition just told in this place around this project being over budget, councillors can clearly see, clearly see by the documents in front of them that what we went out for, what we expected to spend on this, we are spending well, well underneath what we expected to procure this system for. So he just gets up and he says these things, thinking people won't read the documents. But the truth is there for all councillors to see in the documents that are there. Now, one of Indra's biggest international customers is a little transport outfit that councillors may have heard of called Transport for London. And they have done fantastic work there to federate multiple legacy systems, to build out new real time reporting elements and to modernize ticketing by developing and upgrading the Oyster card. This means that they have the experience necessary to deliver these important behind the scenes elements of Brisbane Metro. Of course, we already know that by upgrading the existing busway network, fixing major bottlenecks and introducing high frequency and high capacity vehicles, Metro will provide a smart and cost effective solution to Brisbane's bus congestion issues. Not only will Metro help reduce congestion, travelling on the Metro will be incredibly simple with turn up and go services around, every five minutes during the peak period and then twenty four hours on the weekend with no timetables needed, Chair, for people to catch those services. We know our city is continuing to grow and our transport systems need to be able to cater for future population growth and urban development. Metro is unique in that it combines several transport initiatives to unlock the potential of our existing busway through five key elements. Infrastructure, vehicles which we know people at the ECHA have had a good crack at seeing over the last ten days. Our systems, and this is the package for the systems, policy and of course operations and network and services. Now, we know technology will play a key role in ensuring that Brisbane Metro can operate efficiently and effectively. But at the same time, delivering a very seamless experience for our passengers. At our busway stations with longer platforms like King George Square Station and the Cultural Centre Station, council will be implementing intelligent transport systems to provide customers with greater certainty about when and where their metro vehicle or bus will arrive and improve legibility for them to navigate around these busy stations. Without Metro, sorry, with Brisbane Metro, we are going to provide best in class passenger information and roll it out to the rest of our fleet to give the best possible experience for our customers. Our operational readiness work allows us to build and integrate operational systems in order to deliver the services within the current operating frameworks of the network, the busways and translinks operations. So a lot of moving parts to this chair. Now, there is a huge amount of I T behind the scenes that actually make our transport system here in Brisbane work. And it will be Indra that will be delivering this part of Brisbane Metro for council. This will draw data from the entire transport technology stack in our city, both in council and in translink. B M M S will provide the overall visibility, monitoring and management of critical aspects of metro services, supporting operational decision making on the network and management of customer experience. It will allow us to feed data to and from the vehicles, including vehicle telematics, their location, CCTV status and passenger announcements, information and safety alerts, all coordinated with the Brisbane Metropolitan Traffic Management Centre as well. It will link data in from end of trip facilities, busway and tunnel systems, depot systems and station systems as well as translinks systems. There is also the opportunity within this S C P for expansion to other vehicles in council's public transport fleet over the potential maximum term of the contract. And we'll be aggressively pursuing that option to provide customers across the rest of council's bus fleet of twelve hundred vehicles with a world class public transport experience. Now, just finally, Chair, in some of the other mistruths that councillor Cassidy said about this particular contract, he said that, that this was only included in the scope because the vehicles weren't capable of integrating with TransLink's network or some kind of procurement issue at the front end with the Hess Light Tram twenty five that we've chosen to be the metro vehicle. Well, that is absolutely false. This project, and it just shows the labour team's understanding, with the metro project now in its, what's, what's a fifth, sixth year, they still don't understand that, that this I T project was always in scope at the very start of the project and was necessary because TransLink have not done the work to develop their own in house systems and their own in house capabilities. So once again, this is council stepping up to fill a void that the state has left open. And on local buyer, Chair, I would challenge, I would challenge anyone to find a company more qualified than Indra to deliver this and that that is the reality. You are not going to buy an operating system from a Brisbane based company. You're going to buy it from Microsoft. There are some products that we just cannot procure locally.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Further debate? Councillor Ringan Arden.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on item A and just specifically contract number fifteen. And I'm hoping the mayor or whoever sums up can just clarify because it, my understanding from the papers is that we're paying a private company a million dollars plus extra revenue to, they're paying us, is that correct? Yeah, okay. That, that's what I would hope. Yeah, so the, the papers show that they're, they're paying a million dollars plus one percent of ticket revenue and one dollar per ticket to run ticketed events in the Botanic Gardens at night. And I, I did have a meeting some time ago with the proponents of this proposal. And I had some unanswered questions that they said they'd go back and get more details on. And I didn't really get more detailed answers from them. I, I just want to be on record as saying that I do have strong reservations about this in its current form. And I think the administration probably needs to be doing more public consultation about this before they lock in this deal. I think we know how sensitive residents are about Mount Cootha and the Botanic Gardens. We all remember the zip line proposal, which was, you know, very sensational where, where the council decided that it's a great idea to pay a private company to, to clear trees from the side of Mount Cootha and, and put in that private zip line business. And it cost the council a lot of money and the council didn't do a good job at the outset of consulting with the community and negotiating with local residents before deciding to allocate money, before starting those formal agreements. And I'm, I'm very concerned that the council is doing the same thing here where it does look like, you know, the proposal might have some positive elements, but this is essentially commercializing a public asset. And I have no, I, I, one of the questions I asked for was I, I wanted details on how much this private company will be charging for tickets to these events. Because there's a really big difference between an affordable, low cost ticketed activity that local families can come to and that, you know, pay, pay for a night out for the kids. And maybe there's some, some justification for ticketed events of that nature to occur in somewhere like the Botanic Gardens to help activate that space at night. But that, there's a big difference between that and high cost ticketed events that are targeting, exclusively targeting wealthier demographics, where essentially a private company is getting subsidized access to a public facility at night. And I think in particular, the process here is a little bit concerning because this hasn't gone out to public tender. It's not like Brisbane City Council has said, hey, event organizers and project managers of Brisbane, we want to activate the Botanic Gardens at night. We want to bring in more people to the Botanic Gardens after dark. What are your proposals? Let's have an open submissions process where different people can put in ideas and can, can make their case to council. In this, in this scenario, it looks like the council has received a single proposal from a single company and has then said, yeah, this is good value for money. We're going to tick that off without testing the market and without seeing what other private companies or event promoters might have to offer. And just as a process, I think whenever a public asset like the Botanic Gardens is going to be made available to a single private company and it's going to be leased out for a very long term, this is a five year initial lease with maximum of ten years. This is a big agreement to hand over nighttime control of the Botanic Gardens to this company. That's not something that should be engaged in lightly and I think it's inappropriate for that to be done as a sort of innovative Brisbane proposal with a sole source kind of arrangement here. This, this should be going out to tender and there should be more public consultation about this. And I'm surprised that the councillors for the Western Suburbs haven't been a bit more proactive about seeking direct community feedback from the, the residents in their electorates about whether residents support this. I've seen commentary from the Mount Cootha Protection Alliance raising concerns about light pollution and impacts on nocturnal species and that sort of thing. And it's all well and good for the company to say, oh, we're going to have ecologists and we're going to have environmental impact assessments and all that sort of stuff. But those assessments should take place before the council locks in this deal. The process here is backwards. The, the development application hasn't been lodged yet as far as I understand. So for the council to lock this in and say, yep, this can definitely go ahead before the development application is assessed, before there's been formal and rigorous public consultation and feedback from residents, I think is very concerning. And I, like I said, I want to be very clear on the record that I, I don't support the process and I have reservations about the project itself. Like I said, the, the residents of Brisbane care a lot about how Mount Cootha is used and how the Botanic Gardens are used. And I'm, I'm, I guess I'm surprised at the L N P's poor political instincts on this one where even I as the local council from another part of the city can see there should be a bit more public consultation before you lock in a deal like this. The, the council loves to run its little have your say consultations on all sorts of little park upgrades and all sorts of minor traffic changes. Why wasn't there a big have your say consultation about the decision to sell off or lease off part of the Botanic Gardens to a private company? Why, why isn't that the subject of greater public debate? I think if we had more local journalists and more local reporting capacity, there'd, there'd be some serious investigations into this deal because it, it does look like the sort of deal that has the potential to raise concerns about nepotism. I'm not suggesting that that's what has definitely happened. But I, I do think it's interesting that a single company can come to council and say, give us the gardens, we'll give you a million dollars for the next ten years, all good, without a bit more robust public debate and scrutiny of that. I would at least like the administration to clarify how much tickets are going to be for these night walk events that are happening in the gardens. I, I'd like a bit more detail on how many nights of the year this company is going to be using the gardens for. I'd like more detail on how late the shows are going to go. I'd like more detail on what independent assessments are going to be undertaken to ensure that light pollution isn't negatively impacting local wildlife. And, and I'd like to understand what, what does the council think the projected revenue will be? Because it says the council is going to be receiving one percent of ticket revenue. What, what do we estimate that will be over the next five to ten years? And, and what scope is there going to be for the council to renegotiate or back away from this agreement if it turns out that during the development assessment process, residents raise concerns about this? Because if the development application is lodged and the, the community makes submissions and raises concerns and like we saw with the Mount Cootha zip line, there's a case for not proceeding with the project. Does that mean that council will then have to reimburse this money? How is that all going to work in practice? Is the council saying that this project will definitely go ahead even if the development approval doesn't come through or receives significant objections? And, and finally, what, what consultation has the council actually done with residents? What is the, what are the processes that the council is engaged in so far to decide that this is a good thing for the city of Brisbane? Which local councillors have been surveying their electorates? Have the local councillors who cover the Mount Cootha area talked to their community via social media or via email newsletters to check in with residents? Or is this just the first time that the council has been public about this deal? I, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions about this. I, I hope that the deputy mayor or the mayor can, can provide some of those answers in concluding remarks. Like I said, I want to be open minded about it. I don't want to jump to conclusions. I, I'm not altogether opposed to nighttime activation of Botanic Gardens and I don't want to be misconstrued, that position to be misconstrued. But I do just want to understand a bit more about what's going on here because we're selling off or we're leasing off a, a major public asset to a private company that I presume is going to make a lot of money out of this project. And one dollar per ticket and one percent of ticket revenue seems like a pretty good deal for a private business. I know plenty of event promoters who, who'd love to put on nighttime gigs in the Botanic Gardens. It's a location that's a long way away from the nearest, or comparatively a long way away from nearby residential properties. And, and there's an existing stage and venue space at the Botanic Gardens that could be well activated by a lot of different gig organizers and community events. But the council hasn't opened up that conversation. They haven't given other businesses or community groups an opportunity to articulate their visions for how this space could be used. Instead, the council is just doing, making a, essentially a private deal with this one company without giving other people an opportunity to say what they want to happen with that space. And I do think that's very concerning. So hopefully we can get some more detailed answers out of the administration before we vote on this. If, if we can't get detailed answers, I'll, I'll certainly be voting no. And I'll, I'll be paying very close attention to the development applications when, when they come through. Because I, I suspect this, this could be a repeat of the, the Mount Cootha zip line debacle, although I hope I'm wrong.
Further debate? Councillor Mackay.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Look, I rise to speak about the item A, contracts and tendering with specific reference to the Figtry Pocket Pontoon. And it's all happening in Figtry Pocket. I'll just give you a quick recap about what's happened recently. We're developing our footpath network, so you'll be able to get from the Mandalay area to Indrapili and that will get all the way down to near the pontoon. We did a roundabout upgrade recently, which is great for local residents for safety. We're doing the Gunnan Street intersection upgrade where it joins on to Jesman Road, which is right outside. which is right outside Lone Pine. We're working on the lease extension for the Equestrian Club and funding for the Mandalay Jacaranda Festival.
Do the specific contract, please, Councillor Mackay.
Yeah. And the good news is, Chair, that the Fig Tree Pocket residents and surrounding neighbours will now have access to a wonderful pontoon that we are putting in down at the Fig Tree Pocket Boat Ramp Park. This Boat Ramp Park has a bit of a history. We've been working on the community consultation for this pontoon for quite a number of years now. And that goes all the way back to 2018, when it was first proposed by my predecessor, Julian Simmons. And I worked with the Mandalay Progress Association, which is the peak advocacy group in the area, and they expressed some concern to me about a pontoon, things such as, well, children might fall off it, or, you know, it might attract people to the local area. But all these misgivings aside, the Mandalay Progress Association did work well with the community to get some feedback. And we went back with a second design, which was a modified pontoon that would run next to the boat ramp, and that would allow people to walk along next to the boat ramp, put their kayak in, or get into their ski boat, use a wheelchair to get into whatever craft they might need, and get on with their water sport activity. And then we took this to the community and basically said, "Would you like A, the original design, or B, the walkway design?" People came back and said, "Well, actually, given all of the different choices, we're going to go with A." So that was a decision made by the community, and that has progressed a long, long way over a number of years. And now we're at the point where we're awarding the design and construction for the original design of the pontoon, which will face to the south-east at the Boat Ramp Park. And I, for one, am very happy to hear this, because I do believe that we should be offering as much as possible to help people get out and enjoy our wonderful lifestyle that we have in Brisbane. And I'm honoured to be able to help deliver for the community more access to the beautiful Brisbane River. And I expect that there'll be many keen kayakers use this pontoon, because at the moment, they do struggle walking up and down the slippery boat ramp. And I'd like to thank the people of Fig Tree Pocket for their active participation in this matter.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay, further speakers.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I rise to speak on Item A, and in particular, the Lumina Nightwalks Light Show. I have stood in this place before many times, talking about the role of Brisbane Marketing and now Brisbane EDA to make sure that we are ready for our international visitors in 10 years' time, but we also are supporting our local economy. And the visitor economy is a very large part of our local economy, and we're encouraging everybody to come back and visit Brisbane. And as we know, $6.5 billion goes into our economic potential every year for one extra night stay in Brisbane. One extra night stay by friends or relatives in Brisbane, not Gold Coast, not Noosa, in Brisbane, $6.5 billion into the annual economy. And that is why, when we were approached as a better Brisbane proposal/market-led proposal in state government's term by the company for the Lumina Nightwalks Light Show, we were very interested to see what concessionable product we could offer to tourists, friends and relatives within Brisbane to keep them to stay at nighttime in Brisbane. And that is what we have here before you today. Light Dreaming, PTY, LTD submitted a better Brisbane proposal that did contribute to the Brisbane vision, to demonstrate value to Brisbane, and in particularly, in my role as Economic Development Chair, to the visitor economy and our strategy to get more people to come, stay and play in Brisbane. So this company has got the exclusive Australian rights to operate the internationally-owned and renowned Lumina Nightwalks. So there is no other company that does anything like this, and it's called Moment Factory. They are global leaders in providing unique and world-class lighting shows, including the Lumina Nightwalks. And they have chosen Brisbane as the best and first long-term location in Australia for this unique offering. This is an outstanding opportunity for our local tourism economy. And it's proposing to create, install and operate this long-term light and sound show in the exotic rainforest section of the Brisbane Botanic Gardens at Mount Cootha. The aim is to attract more than 200,000 people a year to see it, create jobs, spending, activation, to continue to our nighttime economy, Councillor Howard, so there's more to see and do, extend the use of the gardens into the evening to increase activation, and as I said, overnight stays. The revenue generated from Light Dreaming's operation is reinvested back into Brisbane via council's budget process. We are being paid the $1 million. That's $100,000 a year over the next 10 years, but it's a five-plus-five, so it'll be a five-year relook at the contract. They are also covering maintenance and costs for the establishment, and we get 1% of the ticket revenue as well. I can't tell you, Councillor Sri, what the ticket revenue will be at this point of time, but there are these similar things in the national parks in Japan and overseas that you could look at a comparison as well. The big one for us is the key tourism destination and connection to other products that we have. So linking to maybe a day at Lone Pine before you have the night at the Lumina Nightwalks, or maybe going on a Kukurrara Queen River cruise and then heading into the Mount Cootha as well. It's all about that visitation and having things to see and do. And at this time, one of our iconic locations is actually not used. It's not used in this area, in the exotic rainforest area. And then there's the idea of educating people on the local indigenous culture, the fauna, the flora. It'll be a first of its type in the southern hemisphere. And they are also aiming to achieve carbon-neutral outcomes using solar power and renewable energy solutions. So their investment capital is about $5 million. No upfront capital investment from council. I wish Councillor Cassidy would learn how to read a contracts and tendering. You'd think he'd been here for a long enough time now, but it says licence to operate with the cost of it. The rest say lump sum, when it costs council as well. And we have negotiated that, so there is return to council through operational costs and recovery as well. There is no need to remove one plant or tree or make any material changes to the Brisbane Botanic Gardens in any way. The installations will be within the exotic rainforest section, hidden or camouflaged from view during normal hours. So during the day, operates exactly as it normally does. Creates no obstacles or vandalism opportunities or any disruption to normal operations.
Point of order, Chair. Councillor Surratt.
Well, the deputy mayor, just take a quick question. Just a quick question.
Deputy Mayor, will you take a question?
Thanks, through you, Chair. Do you know how many nights a year they're planning to operate this thing?
Yes, something I've prepared earlier. Yes. They are proposing it will be held for 170 nights per year on a... Sorry, microphone. Proposing it will be held 170 nights per year on a Friday and Saturday for 48 weeks, every night during the school holidays, if, you know, maybe not the winter ones, but they want the opportunity to increase it over the school holidays. So they don't want to impact on other events or operations that we have, but it is only on the weekends at this point of time as well. So there'll be... We see neutral impact residence to the ecology. They're using specialised, localised and directional proprietary technology, which absolutely significantly limits noise and light spills. It'll be on the ground within 100 metres radius zone from one light show station to another, which then contains all the light spills. So again, minimum effect on any of the fauna during the evening as well. By reducing the distance, though, between the projector and the projection surface, it brings the visitor nearer to the image as well, and it's possible to have the light sources emitting lower light output, and of course, then less power as well. So it is a great opportunity for us as well. It is a multimedia experience in a natural environment. There's a high level of care and consideration. So this was not one that we were thinking that there would be any other people that we could go out to tender for. These are the global leading company in these shows and have demonstrated experience across the world.
Point of order, Councillor Surratt.
One more quick clarifying question? Thank you. And I do really appreciate your openness in responding to these. Does the agreement you're making mean that other parts of the garden wouldn't be able to be leased out to other businesses on those Fridays and Saturdays nights? Like, do they have exclusive control of the whole garden, even though this is only happening in the rainforest area? Or, for example, if we wanted to hire out another area to a music concert, would they be allowed to do that?
I cannot answer that question. This is specifically about the exotic rainforest area, just for the night show that they're operating as a concessionable product that is dealt with through news/commercial leasing/ communities, not my portfolio within economic development. So we thought this was a great opportunity. We think it's a great opportunity for Brisbane. We think it is a great compatible tourism opportunity that links with all of our other nighttime... or minimal nighttime things that we have, like a Kukurrara River cruise or a climb the Story Bridge, but also very much with spend the day at the Botanic Gardens, stay at nighttime... I just put something in my throat, sorry. Have the afternoon at the Planetarium and then go through the Lumina Nightworks. There is just 100 different ways to now plan an extra night in Brisbane, and that is what we are really looking at. So, look, I thoroughly support this programme I have from the moment. They first came and saw me, Councillor Sri Surratt, and as you said, they did come around and see a few people. I think any opportunity to get more feet on the street for our tourism, our local economy, stay in hotels, spend our food and beverage and support our local industries is a great outcome with no expense to council, and I thoroughly support this to chambers.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion for an afternoon tea break. Moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Any further speakers? No further speakers. I now put the motion before us, which is the E and C report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please. Microphone.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympics Game Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, the 16th of August, 2022, be adopted. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by Councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I go into last week's committee meeting, I will just again revise what's happened at the Brisbane Business Hub in the last week or what is coming up. And we had a great presentation this morning from Miriam Kent. Talk about more next week. But coming up on the 18th of August, Councillors, Eight Step Guide to Prepare Your Business for Future Normal. Wouldn't we all like some future normal? That is from 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock, and it's being held by the Griffith Business School. So a masterclass of strategies to make your business fit for purpose over the coming decade. And then on the 23rd of August, we hear from 9:30 to 11:00, Five Steps to Winning New Business. So particularly for sole traders and sales teams on what it takes to win new business, touching base on the four Cs of sales successes and five steps on how to win new business. And that is being done by our partner, Expert Sales to Success. So Sharon is down on my board too, and I know what a great job she does. So that is coming up in the next couple of weeks. In last week's committee presentation, I am happy to tell Councillor Strunk on the other hand, who is the only person there but wasn't there with us last week, we had the Host City Operations Team presenting on what they've been doing in preparation for the Olympics, regardless of what has been said that you never get any of those presentations in my committee. And it's about starting to think about the future of Brisbane's inner city in time for those Olympics. And just like Expo 88 has absolutely transformed part of our city and set Brisbane on that growth and prosperity over the last, oh, 30 years. I'm starting to feel old. The 2032 also gives us an opportunity for not just the next 10 years, but the 10 years after that and the 10 years beyond. So this is an opportunity of a lifetime to revitalise and reimagine and popular inner-city precincts, not only to make sure the games is ready, but things like Lumina Nightworks were ready for the visitation. We're ready for so much to see and do as well. So we held the Ideas Fiesta in 2013, which was a huge success. It was the first time we launched the idea of making Albert Street a mall and a green spine. And we closed it down for a couple of weekends, and we had chairs to share, and people came in and shared what they wanted to see in the city. And everybody did really like the idea that Albert Street might actually close down to traffic. And look what's going to happen. Just in the next probably 12 months, 24 months, Albert Street will become a part of the closed green spine from Roma Street down the Botanic Gardens with the onlining of the Cross River Rail and all of those opportunities as well. So it's about creating conversations. Other things we heard from then was Howard Smith Wolves, Queen's Plaza, the green bridges, definitely, even though the Kangaroo Point Bridge has been spoken about for about 100 years, there was one that was really pushed just 10 years ago as well. And those ideas turned into reality. It put us on the map. It elevated our competitive capital city, and that's what we're looking about now. It's no doubt one of the reasons why we are so successful. We were very early seen as the only contender for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Our creative economy is taking off. Our nighttime presence is finally getting back there, Councillor Howard. We're working on it. Covid didn't help, but pre to that, it was really ramping up. There's new interest. There's new investment. And that's why we need to have a new iteration of big projects for our city. And this is what this conversation is about. Big projects, big ideas, some of them a little bolder than where we're going, maybe not closing down the Riverside Expressway any time soon, and I'm not quite sure about an Olympic pool in the river. However, that is a very, very popular, very popular vote at the moment. But let's just get the ball rolling. Let's have the conversation. We started with planners, architects, designers, engineers, universities. They all had their dream projects tucked away in the top drawer. They couldn't get them out fast enough to us, and we got them out. We have 80 out there now for people to have a look at, but it's all about giving us extra ideas as well. So we had 600 ideas put through when we first hired these people, and with a wider consultation, we came up with the ones that were continually recurring. And so that's why we've come out with our suggested at the moment for the votes, but please, any other ideas. No idea is too big, too small or too far-fetched at the moment. It's about the conversation. It's called the Inner Spark, because it's about sparking the ideas that could lead to something that's different. It's about sparking concepts that we can start weaving together to become the Olympic City in the next 10 years. It's about what our inner city is going to look like, because as I've said it, and I'm sure I'll say it many, many times in the coming years, we have no Olympic Park. You're not going to hop off and walk through a gate and go, "Oh, here is the Olympic Park." You are going to be in the inner 5Ks of the CBD, where 54% of the venues are and more than 80% of the actual events. So we need to make sure that our inner 5Ks is ready to go, absolutely ready to go. Major projects, Metro, Green Bridges, Victoria Park, they all lay the foundations. So this inner-city framework work and then the city centre master plan is critical to keep that momentum going. The Inner Spark is the very, very first step. And I have to say, so far, an overwhelming response, very, very positive. 18 and a half thousand votes have been cast to today with the green. And Green the Queen is winning, so that's the one where we're greening right through Victoria Bridge, through the Queen Street Mall. Super Canopy, and then removing the Riverside Expressway is the frontrunner at the moment, which is all a great idea till you actually figure out where else you're going to use. But as I said, no idea is too big or too far-fetched at this point as well. More than 250 new and unique ideas have been submitted to the community to add to the mix. And can I urge all of you in the chambers and everybody who's not in chambers, which is quite a few at the moment, please get involved and have your say. Let us know which ideas you love. Share it with your communities. Feedback is open until the 25th of September. Heaps of time. It's all about making sure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today, that our game spectators, when they do get here, whether it's in 2028 through to 2032, tell their friends and family about the fantastic subtropical city, what they discovered and why we are such a fantastic city to visit. And it is, as I said, making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate. I move this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Murphy and seconded by Councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, at our committee meeting last week, officers from Transport for Brisbane delivered a very informative presentation on the upcoming bus network review. As we know, the Shrinna Council is delivering a record investment in public transport in Brisbane. Brisbane. We are delivering the highest investment in buses and ferries, and we are also delivering a brand-new transport option with Brisbane Metro. Currently, buses are doing the heavy lifting when it comes to public transport in our city, with two-thirds of all public transport trips being taken on a bus. Each day during the peak, over 385 buses use the Cultural Centre station alone, and almost 900 buses travel through the CBD every single hour. We have a world-class busway in Brisbane, our 27-kilometre system is fully segregated, and with Brisbane Metro, that means we make a lot better use of its transport potential. Brisbane Metro will bring high-frequency turn-up-and-go services to our city along two key lines, providing much-needed relief to the congestion, hotspots, bottlenecks, and over-capacity busway stations within the bus network. We know councillor Cassidy, who's just joined us, would have us just add more and more buses into our city. We know that under Labor, there will be even more buses queuing over Victoria Bridge, stuck on Adelaide Street, all waiting at the Melbourne Street busway portal. But the reality is, Mister Chair, to get you out of traffic and to get you to your destination sooner, changes will have to be made to our bus network, some changes will have to be made. We simply cannot add new metro services into an already congested network. We have over 200 bus routes in Brisbane, and as a growing city, it has been added on to bit by bit, time after time. That means our network is very complicated. Some services run different routes in the morning to the evening, some services are duplicated, running identical paths along separate route numbers, others might drop you off right outside your office in the city, only to pick you up at a different spot on the way home. We want to make sure that everyone can find their way around, especially in the lead-up to the 2032 Olympics, because it's going to put our city on the map for a lot of people who previously haven't heard and couldn't visit Brisbane, so they will be here en masse, and we need to make sure that we have a public transport system that is mature and that is ready to take them where they need to go. Metro Lines 1 and 2, we know, will replace the 111, the 160 and the 66, but delivering Metro and the revised bus network will also mean that there are more buses available for the suburbs as well. This will be the most extensive bus network review in a decade, and it has been a critical part of Brisbane Metro since the project's inception. We've been working hard to plan for it and to get it right. Council's transport planners have been working closely with TransLink to review and to evolve the bus network to include our new high-frequency metro services and to unlock access to more connections and key destinations. As the committee was told last week, Mister Chair, while developing the draft network, our planners have been guided by a set of network principles. Firstly, the vast majority of bus services start in the suburbs and terminate in the city, this causes congestion during peak hours and delayed trip times, so we want the new network to decongest the inner busway and to improve service reliability. We also want to make the CBD stops more consistent and less confusing, so we'll be creating more consistent bus stop locations in the CBD, no matter your direction of travel. That means most of us can expect to get on our service in the afternoon, roughly the same spot that we got dropped off at in the morning. We also know we need to make better use of our resources by simplifying our complex route structures and funneling those resources into better suburban connections. We're also planning to take pressure off the overloaded Cultural Centre station by shifting some transfer locations to other major busway stations within the CBD. We're introducing a new CBD bus corridor to service the southern CBD and integrate with Cross River Rail's new Albert Street Station, just like how the Adelaide Street Bus Corridor services the northern CBD area. This will connect more residents to the growing office and entertainment precincts in our city like Eagle Street and Queen's Wharf. There will also be plenty of transfer opportunities between Brisbane Metro and Cross River Rail at stations like Roma Street and Boggo Road. And as our city continues to grow and prepare for 2032, all of these changes will help us to provide capacity for future service growth and future metro routes, like out to Cherm Side or like out to the airport, or like out to Carindale. Of course, we're bringing Brisbane residents along on this transport journey with us to ensure that we get the best possible outcome for our city. We'll be asking the community to have their say on the proposed detailed network changes in October this year, so not long to wait, Chair. Council will refine this bus network based on community input before releasing a final network in mid-2023, ahead of metro services commencing in late 2024, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
I'll do it with the microphone on, thank you, councillor Mackay. There being no further debate, I'll move the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 9th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9th of August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The report last week was on the Newham and Weka Road intersection upgrade. There's little that I can add from what I've said already today on that, but it's an excellent project. There were a number of questions answered in the presentation about how it makes our roads safer and more efficient. Can I also note that there are four petitions, each of which were supported by local councillors? I look forward to further contributions.
Thank you. Are there any further contributions? Any further debate? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the Newham Road and Weka Road intersection upgrade, and I would like to thank very heartily the Chair of Infrastructure, councillor Wines, and also the federal government through the local community funds programme on delivering this project that I've been lobbying for as the local council in this area for the last 15 years. It's always been an intersection that has been a major concern. Most people will know it, as councillor Wines said earlier today, is the intersection with the Mount Cravat Bunnings, which, number one, makes it very, very busy. Juggling across from that is a path that is used quite a bit now, particularly for bootcamps and training. It also has a school on the other corner, Mount Cravat East, which very, very restricted parking onsite and in and around that school. So it has always been the major roads between Weka and Newham, the major roads out of Mansfield and up in Mount Cravat heading into town or heading east, which means the congestion was really getting a little out of control. We made a few changes a few years ago with some right-turn arrows, which definitely made an improvement, but an extra lane now, safer travelling, particularly the safe school for travel for the kids and the cycling, has just been an absolutely amazing benefit to the local residents, to the local shoppers, to the local schools, and I can't say thank you enough for something that I fought for for very long, but I'm glad that councillor Wong and councillor Murphy, now that they share the boundary with both of you, that we can all share the benefits of this fantastic project. Well done, councillor Wines, thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Sri Ranganathan. Thanks, Chair. We're on, just on item B, the petition regarding inner northwest bike lanes, or bike lanes, I guess they're called in the petition. I'm a little disappointed in the response, I think it probably, it comes across to me as a little too dismissive. I think the petitioners have raised quite legitimate concerns about cycling safety issues along that Baruna Road and Rowway Terrace corridor. I appreciate the council's got a lot of different corridors and a lot of different cycling routes it's wanting to fix up, but this is a pretty high-volume area. Some of the commentary there about on-street parking is a valuable community commodity, et cetera, et cetera, it seems to be code for saying, well, we don't want to take parking away to improve cycling safety, and I would suggest that that's a very regressive and outdated way of thinking in 2022. Cities all around the world now are saying, yeah, look, on these busy cycling corridors, we're going to have to take away a bit of street parking in order to stop cyclists getting hit and in order to encourage a shift away from car-based transport. And I think this petition doesn't go far enough in acknowledging the importance of that shift. I was also interested to see that the petitioners have raised some specific concerns about issues like potholes and cracks in the road surface, and council investigated and basically said, look, they're not really bad enough yet for us to make major interventions, but the, I think it's, yeah, I think it's important to recognise that often the shoulders of roads are in worse condition than the main lanes that the cars drive down, and sometimes the way council officers inspect and evaluate the condition of roads seems to be with an eye of, okay, is this good enough for a car to drive down the middle of the road, rather than looking at the condition of the shoulder of the road closer to the gutters. I'm not closely familiar enough with this particular corridor to be able to say exactly what the condition's like along the shoulders of the road, but I did just want to note for the record that I've had experiences where in the past, officers have said to me, oh, we think this road's safe, it meets our standards, but the edges of the road where bikes often ride are certainly not safe enough, and they're riddled with little potholes and big cracks and that sort of thing. So hopefully that this was taken seriously. I acknowledge that it's only a small petition, but still worth considering in detail. I guess just finally, I wanted to highlight that the active transport network plan, we're sort of still waiting for that, seems a little bit odd that that's taken such a long time. I'm really itching to see details of the new proposed corridors, and hopefully we'll be seeing that coming through the council sometime soon. I'm also just a little surprised that this is being treated as an infrastructure committee issue, because I thought, and maybe the Chair can explain briefly why it comes through this committee as opposed to the Transport Committee, because I understood that the Transport Committee was responsible primarily for dealing with bikeways and active transport and bike safety issues. So is it just because it's related to a road and therefore it's handled by the Infrastructure Committee? And if the Infrastructure Committee is indeed handling everything that's on a road, then does that kind of mean that actually the Infrastructure Committee is responsible for bike safety on roads? In which case, it does seem like there's a bit of a mismatch in terms of portfolio descriptions and responsibilities. So hopefully councillor Wines can just clarify that in terms of that petition. And I think, in the absence of councillor Johnston, I should also note just my concerns about the draft petition response for Venna Road Fairfield and Park Road Fairfield for that roundabout. It's, you know, been a significant safety issue for quite some time. Again, I think this petition is sort of kicking the can down the road a little bit. It says that there's going to be pre-feasibility investigations. That, to me, sounds like code for we're not really going to do anything much anytime soon, so hopefully I'm wrong, and hopefully the council's taking this more seriously and going to do something about this in the near future. But I've ridden through there, I've driven through there, I've also been a pedestrian walking across that roundabout on one occasion, and it's not particularly safe, and the crash history bears that out. So, yeah, not super happy with that petition response, and I hope the issue will be looked at more closely and taken more seriously in future.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Wines, something up?
Thanks, Mister Chair. Just to add my further contributions, I want to thank the deputy mayor for her very kind words about the intersection. I know that it is one that wasn't as straightforward as you would have thought it would be, but we got there in the end, and it's complete now, which is really good. And as I said earlier, servicing more than 35,000 vehicle movements per day, along with hundreds of cycle movements, and again, many, many pedestrian movements as well. So it is a lot safer, it is a lot more efficient, and it will serve that area very, very well. In regard to the petitions that were commented on by councillor, I apologise, I will ask him for further counsel on how to properly pronounce his name, but for today, I'll call him councillor Sri for ease. On the matter of why this came through my committee and not the Transport Committee, it was a question I also asked, but the simple answer is always the best one, that yes, because it deals with the road, it came through the roads, councillor, basically. That's the answer, and it deals with road condition, it deals with how these particular items deal with the road, so that is the answer to that question. The petition also speaks, the petition response also speaks to a number of concerns that are identified, and that there were 379 bicycle movements per day at the intersection of Husler, and approximately 304 bicycle movements per day at the intersection of Park Road and Milton, and the majority of bicycle movements were on-road and travelling along the corridor. But also, that's not just to dismiss concerns of cyclists, we always try to improve the cycling safety for people who are committed to that type of transport, so we have also, it also speaks to an opportunity to continue to work in that community for improved cycling safety. On the topic of Venna Road, I must defend the pre-feasibility process, which was questioned and challenged. Pre-feasibility is, of course, what we do to identify whether we should continue on. So the Venna Road intersection or the Fairfield Road roundabout, which most people would know it as, right next to the old RSPCA site there, very busy, five-way roundabout, one of them goes to Ipswich Ride, one down to Yoronger State School, the main thoroughfare, and then there are suburban streets off to the other direction, which I think is the west. The intersection does carry a lot of traffic, we do try and avoid five-way roundabouts. We have identified through the draft response, which I trust will be approved today, that we will do the pre-feasibility, which determines whether we should move to the more expensive feasibility study, which will work out, which is much more expensive, but would definitely work out whether we are going to do that project or not. But a pre-feasibility, I suppose, is the first domino in the sequence, and once it's hit down, that's when we start working out whether we're going to do a project or not. So this is the first one. I believe that it's a good answer for people in that community, and it's, as I say, step one of what can be a complicated process.
Thank you. Now move to the vote on the Infrastructure Committee Report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, please.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 9th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9th of August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you. Mister Chair, in last week's committee presentation, we were provided with an update, has my PC just run out of juice? No, we're still good. We were provided with an update on a DA at eight textile Crescent Salisbury, which was for a company called Food Connect. The Food Connect Foundation was created as a non-profit organisation to promote, educate, and advocate for local and international fair food systems, and has been operating in the same site for 12 years and purchased the site in 2019. Food Connect works in partnership with more than 80 farmers within South East Queensland, returning 50% of the retail price to farmers and generating 28 million within the local food economy. An overview of the site included the following details. So the site has an area of 2,256 square metres, it has a caretaker's accommodation, it has a cafe and bakery, it has a pop-up outlet for certain types of exhibitors, it has an ancillary event space, and importantly, there is no change to the existing industrial uses on the site. The proposal aligns with the intent of the draft strategy for the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan in the following aspects. It promotes innovative and multifaceted use of industrial premises, it provides for land uses and activities which have a nexus with existing industrial uses while facilitating employment opportunities, it protects the industrial function of the area, and it also increases the attractiveness and functionality of the existing industrial area. The benefits of the proposal to the community include providing additional revenue streams while supporting local farmers, it enables Food Connect to display and promote products on a site co-located with existing industrial operations, it revitalises an underutilised industrial space, it provides flexibility to typically go back to an industrial use if it needs to, it fosters a sense of community, and it also supports the provision of amenity and fresh food options for the local workforce, so a very good outcome, and it received quite a number of submissions supporting the application. In addition to the presentation, we had a petition requesting that the current Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan and associated processes be cancelled and commence a new Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan now. The committee received a couple of petitions on this particular matter. The position that we're currently in is councils produced a draft strategy. The draft strategy was put to the community to source feedback, and it's a step in the neighbourhood planning process that we don't have to... neighbourhood planning process that we don't have to do, but we do it because it provides a great starting point for exchanging views. The input that we've received from residents to that strategy has been solid. You know, the sort of notion that they haven't been consulted unfortunately isn't accurate. There were quite a significant number of newsletters and emails distributed to the community, both in terms of the initial research, but also the draft strategy itself. The level of feedback that we got from the community on the draft strategy was significant. In addition to the feedback we received, there was 1,100 submitted surveys, more than 350 comments were pinned to an interactive map, and more than 250 emails were received from submitters. So, look, there was quite a lot of community consultation on this and some really valuable feedback. What we're currently doing is we're reviewing that feedback and it will help to inform the draft neighbourhood plan. That will then go back not only to the state for some feedback, but also to the community for a further round of consultation. And, you know, certainly at this point in time, this process is a long way from finished and there's a lot of consultation and input that can still be provided. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I just ask that item B be taken, Seri Adam, for voting, please.
Be Seri Adam for voting, yes.
Yeah, and I don't know that I would necessarily agree with the petitioners in wanting another one started after this one was cancelled, if they got their way, because I'd be once bitten, twice shy if I was this community and seeking this LMP administration to undertake a fresh neighbourhood plan the same way that they have done this one out here. Councillor Griffiths has certainly put on record his community's reservations about that process to date. We've had discussions in this chamber over the last couple of weeks about that and this large petition, as well as the overwhelming feedback to date, from what I understand, is that the community is not happy what this LMP administration is proposing, particularly in terms of the destruction of large swathes of character housing in certain parts of the Nathan Salisbury Maruka neighbourhood plan area. And they're desperately concerned about the social and built fabric of their community. So we certainly support the petitioners in this instance and don't support the administration's response to them.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Strunk?
Thanks. Just on item A, never let it be said that I object to every development that comes through the council, because this is one I'm very happy to support. I think Food Connect does really good work and it's positive to see that the council is approving this application to allow kind of more diverse range of uses on the site. I did just want to place on the record that I think really this is a good example of council over-regulating in some of the industrial land uses, but particularly one of the triggers for needing to have the DA, as I understand it, is that they want to hold events in part of the warehouse. And to be honest, I think that's something that should be allowed as of right in a lot of industrial warehouse areas. I know the council's been looking at some reforms in this space, but as a matter of common sense, of all the places in the city to be holding little music concerts or community gatherings, it makes sense to hold them in industrial areas that are further away from sensitive residential uses. And so it's almost a shame, I think, that we do have to, or community groups or event organisers are prevented from activating some of these industrial areas unless they go through that full development application process. And so maybe this isn't the form for it, but I know councillor Allen's had some correspondence from me about this broader issue and it would be nice to see some more positive movements from the administration about supporting the arts and community projects via a broader framing and understanding of how these industrial sites work in practice, because this is not a new thing. Artists and event organisers and community groups have been using warehouse sites for community events and projects for years and years, often in ways that technically don't comply with the current city plan. And that's happening right across the city. And I think this particular DA is just one such example where really there's not many changes being made to the actual building. They're pretty minor changes just in terms of how the existing building is getting used. And so it kind of makes you wonder why did they have to go through the significant cost and hassle of an impact assessable DA for something that's not really even changing the overall structure of the site, that's simply making some minor amendments to how that site's used. So yeah, happy to support the approval of this DA, just conscious that maybe this is an example of an area where council has gone too far in regulating such uses and that hopefully in future we'll see a bit more flexibility and openness in terms of how industrial sites and warehouses can be used so that other community groups aren't having to go through that significant cost just so that they can occasionally use their warehouse for a Friday night gig or event or whatever. Thanks.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will take the opportunity just to respond to councillor Cassidy's rather colourful and outlandish comment. So destruction of large swathes of character housing. Look, I think he's going to be pretty disappointed if he thinks that's what's going to happen. And perhaps he should have been in the committee this morning when I covered this in a question that was raised by councillor Strunk. We acknowledge there is character housing in a lot of the key areas that we're looking at in the neighbourhood plan, but rest assured, we'll be looking at those houses on a house by house, street by street basis, particularly to look at, you know, what their character values are and whether they're part of a character streetscape. So this sort of notion that there's going to be sort of swathes of character housing destroyed is, just as I said, a little bit premature and a little bit too flamboyant. Now, to councillor Shree Ranganathan's point, we are currently in the process of reviewing the industrial strategy for the city and the intent is to try and build some more flexibility and agility into particularly the industry A zoning. So I guess my message is to watch this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we now move to the vote on this report. First up, item A. All in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Vote on item B. All in favour of item B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. The League, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and four against.
Thank you. I declare that motion for item B carried. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee presentation last week was on the Greenheart Fair, which was held at Victoria Park, Barrenburn, on Sunday, the 29th of May. This year's Greenheart Fair was the largest ever, showcasing about 120 sustainable exhibitors and sponsors, drawing over 15,000 residents to attend over the day. Residents had the opportunity to participate in a host of exciting activities, including workshops on growing food at home, upcycling household items and learning about Brisbane's natural environment. One of the most popular attractions, as it always is, was council's free native plant stall, which saw over 3,000 native plants, such as calistmuns and melaleucas, handed out throughout the day. Other activities included the Green Home Living Eco Kids and the Reduce Reuse Recycle Zones. Across the fair, food vendors served up sustainably sourced local produce with compostable plates and cutlery, which residents could enjoy while taking in the live on-the-green entertainment at the solar-powered stage. Residents were able to utilise the many waste sorting stations around the fair, which in total diverted 1,600 litres of organic waste away from landfill. No single-use plastics were used across the event and Waste Warriors assisted in keeping Victoria Park clean and green during the day. In all, this year's Greenheart Fair was a huge success. The event received 98% attendee satisfaction from those that were surveyed. Forty-eight percent of residents identified as returning fair friends, which meant that over half of attendees were new to the event. It's great to see more residents becoming actively involved and engaged with our mission to keep Brisbane clean, green and sustainable. And I'm very confident that next year's Greenheart Fair will be even bigger and better. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I now move the report. All in favour of this report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Toomey, City Standards Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Toomey and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, we had a very illuminating presentation on the post-office square lighting upgrade project. The presenter in committee shined a light on some of the constraints of the site and how the offices from different departments worked together to ensure that the project was a gleaming success. I'm glad someone's appreciating it. Councillor Maddock, I went to a lot of effort here.
Yeah.
I am a bright spark, thank you. The end result, chamber, the end result is a brighter future for Post Office Square, which is light-filled with a modernised LED lighting on the pathways, volards and stairs. And I will...
It's a beacon for the future.
Well, it could be. It could be a beacon for the future. Councillor Wines, thank you for the interjection. And I will leave debate for the chamber.
Thank you. With all the coloured lights in various other parts of the city that council can turn on to support various community groups and other organisations, I thought it could have had some coloured lighting in Post Office Square. So was it actually an opportunity missed? I thought it was an opportunity missed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take councillor Cummings' very bright comment and forward that on to the Chair for her consideration when she returns. Thank you.
With the mic on. Thank you again. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 16th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Howard.
It was a bit of a week ahead of myself, wasn't it? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before moving to the report, of course, I just want to mention a few things that have been happening in and around our beautiful city over the last week. I was delighted to attend the blessing of a new Vinnie's store on the corner of Warner Street and Wickham Street, right in the heart of Fortitude Valley, last Thursday. And it's a much anticipated store and I think it's going to do extremely well in its space. It really enlivens an area of Fortitude Valley that has been empty for quite a while. And so following the blessing, the store, it was opened on Saturday morning. And so if you're looking for a bargain, there's a new Vinnie's store, of course, which does a lot of work towards supporting our more vulnerable people across Brisbane. On Thursday night, we saw the opening of Kaleidoscope on the performance lawn at the Brisbane Powerhouse. And Keith Courtney's work is nothing short of amazing. So I encourage all of you to pop along to the performance lawn and to buy a ticket to help Brisbane Powerhouse and to help our artists. But Keith was absolutely thrilled with the result. The kaleidoscope will provide so much entertainment, not only during the day, but also at night time. And so it will also be there until October. So really encourage you to let your residents know about that amazing new art installation at the performance lawn at the Brisbane Powerhouse. On Friday, the Lord Mayor has already mentioned about the Camilla fundraising lunch for breast cancer. But one of the things I'd like to add is that in keeping with the comments that I've made earlier about the Cube Effect, Andy Martin, who was the winner of one of the awards, performed at the Camilla event and in fact has just released his EP. So again, an excellent opportunity for people to see the impact that the Cube Effect has on our emerging artists. On Saturday, again, the Lord Mayor mentioned India Fair Day and it's always a wonderful event to attend. And I know very many of the councillors were there to support our friends at India Fair Day. On Saturday night, I attended the Moonlight Tango Winter Festival in the Ithaca Auditorium. And again, what an amazing group of people who have come together to dance the tango. I have to say that I didn't dance because I've got two left feet, but it was just an amazing, an amazing evening. And it's something that they want to do annually. They told me that half of the participants had come from interstate. So again, a wonderful opportunity to show people Brisbane. It was also the launch of the Brisbane Tango Orchestra. And I really want to thank Annie and Alessandro for the work that they did in making that happen. And then finally, on Sunday, I attended the Brisbane Girls' Grammar School Gala Concert at the Convention Centre. And yet again, what a wonderful opportunity to see the future of Brisbane on display and to know that these girls are just amazing. The performance was just fantastic. Now, moving to the committee presentation, we had Light Up Brisbane, the story behind our city activations. And our city activations is a service within our council's business hotline. The service was introduced in 2013 to support and promote not-for-profit organisations, community and cultural events, and awareness campaigns through the use of council assets. It primarily consists of the decorative lighting of iconic structures and the installation of banners on council-managed bridges. So we were taken through the ability to see how this actually happens and to know that in addition to the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge, council has a number of alternate assets that can be requested for a light up. So Brisbane City Hall, Reddick Cliff Place sculptures, Wickham Terrace Car Park, the Tropical Display Dome and the Breakfast Creek Bridge. We have also a number of spaces that we can hang bridge banners. So places like Story Bridge, Hale Street, Caxton Street, and in all, there are nine areas across Brisbane that we can do that. So the Light Up Brisbane page on council's website incorporates a calendar, which is updated monthly, and displays the schedule for approved light up activations across all of council's assets. So I urge again councillors to take a look at the presentation because it really was quite stunning, some of the work that's been done. And I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th of August, 2022, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from the Human Resources Branch about athletes in the workplace. It was a timely presentation delivered at the conclusion of the Birmingham Commonwealth Games. And, Mr. Chair, it was particularly exciting for our HR branch manager as it was an opportunity for her to celebrate the very special achievements of a member of her team. Cheryl Linfield from council's... Cheryl Linfield from council's HR branch and her lawn bowls partner, Serena Bonnell, represented Australia at the Birmingham Commonwealth Games in the Para Lawn Bowls Women's Pairs B68 event, winning, of course, the silver medal. I hope she doesn't mind me mentioning it, but at 63, Cheryl was Australia's oldest athlete at the Games and it's quite a remarkable and inspiring achievement. She took up bowls in 1983 and only returned to the sport just last year. On her journey to the Games, Cheryl dominated the women's singles at the 2021 Queensland Multi Disability Championships and also participated in the 22 Trans Tasman, where she was named the overall team, para team champion. But our presentation, Mr Chair, wasn't all just about Cheryl. It was an opportunity to talk about our broader initiatives to recognise the benefits of athletes in the workplace, both for the individual but also for council. While top athletes in more popular sports can earn a good living, we know that for many elite athletes, particularly in the Olympic, Paralympic Commonwealth Games sports, balancing employment and sporting commitments can be difficult. So as an employer, council can benefit from employing athletes as they're often high performers, goal oriented and resilient, and they exhibit strong leadership, team and management skills. We provide employees with special leave for certain major national or international sporting events. This includes competitors, team managers, coaches, umpires, referees and officials. We also provide flexible arrangements for training and for trial events. So providing that flexibility, we can support our athletes in developing their career outside of sport and council can benefit from the unique attributes of elite, of elite athletes. In the lead up to the 32 Games, Mr Chair, I think that's something that we all should really encourage. We are working on a programme to support our emerging Olympian and Paralympic athletes during their sporting career, to gain knowledge, skills and work experience in an occupational area outside of their sport, so they can transform their skills from their chosen occupation following their competitive sporting career. Mr Chair, I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item six on the agenda as councillor Ranganathan isn't here. The options available, available to me are to either defer this or to say that the motion lapses. That's under 38, 1 and 2 of the meeting's local law. I suggest that we defer this motion until the meeting next week, as we did last week. Thank you. Petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? No petitions? This is unusual. Are there no petitions? Does councillor come back into the room? All right, I'll move on to the next item, which is general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No one standing. Are there any matters of general business? councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. Today I wanted to speak about the lovely Ryan, councillor Ryan Murphy. Recently, we celebrated your 10 year anniversary as councillor. Many have come from these halls, but none like our very own councillor Murphy. I didn't quite make it to your 10 year celebration, I'm very sorry about that. My body had other plans in mind. Or I just fell, let's be honest. You've made some incredible achievements, both personally and for our city, and for that we're really grateful. You first made your mark on the Brisbane City Council political scene in 2011, when you made the brave decision to contest the Doughboy Award against the then councillor John Campbell. He was the only councillor, sorry, he was the only Doughboy Award councillor ever since its inception in 1982 until 2012, when you won Doughboy Award. Over the past 10 years, you've created some memories none of us will ever forget. Mark, your previous ward advisor, who worked with you for seven years, wanted to let you know, I've had the pleasure of meeting Ryan in March 2012 and the honour of joining him on his journey to being a very well respected member of our community and extremely capable leader. I consider myself very lucky to have worked with Ryan, to learn from him, but most of all, I cherished our friendship, which we have, and shared during the days, weeks and years to come. I'll be forever grateful for all the love and support he gave us. Hannah, who has worked with you for over six years, said, you're a fantastic leader and you have a knack for bringing people together. Deb, your current ward advisor, said, I didn't put it into this email, but Deb loves you. I'm very sorry, I didn't write that in. Toby, your current ward advisor, said, Ryan, you're a person who strives for excellency and endeavours to bring out the best in people. You raise those who are around you to a new level and honour those not just above or to your side, but below as well. This is a quality that not many people have. Thank you so much for your mentorship. We are so lucky to have you as our councillor. Toby also wanted to share a story. One of my fondest memories with you includes losing my phone and subsequently fishing it out of the mighty Belimba Creek during a meeting. Despite tripping over an exposed plank on a bridge whilst taking some video footage, true media advisor there, you jokingly proclaimed that I had thrown a $2,000, $2,000 into the creek for fun and joked that I let it stay for two nights in the creek. Some people believe, somehow people believe this and I will never, ever live it down. Nelson, from your chair's office, said, in a time where Australians are more and more disappointed with our politicians, it's been a privilege to work for someone with a vision, with someone with integrity and with a sense of humour. You have big ideas and stuff that makes me so excited to get up in the morning, even if it's, even if they're not always get the green light. And we need a big ideas for the big challenges we have as this city. Thank you for your support always, Ryan. And Emma, your beautiful wife, wanted to let you know, you have worked so hard over these years, and you are so passionate about making Brisbane a better city. I don't think that ever, that this is ever truly out of your mind. You're a fantastic councillor, but Elodie and I are so lucky to have the best of you as a wonderful husband and a father. Ryan, you're an incredible friend and I have, you have been a phenomenal mentor to me. I wouldn't be here today without you. You left a big hole in Doughboy Award. When I became the councillor, some of the, like, community leaders didn't want to talk to me, they still wanted to chat to Ryan. But I think we've, you know, made those bridges. But the late nights, my meltdowns, especially during the election, you were always there for me and I'm so grateful. This leads me to quickly recognise some of your incredible achievements. As a chair role, you're modernising our public transport options, including e-bikes and scooters. We not only have double decker city cats, but now they have shade sales. You're also delivering mega projects that will change the face of our city, the metro and green bridges. You started a trend with dog park parties right across our city after trying to curb the problem with our baiting. We held one together at Meadowlands, we have to do it again, Ryan. You also helped to deliver the greatest Meals and Wheels facility over in Wakely and it also has eight netball courts. It's amazing. Also on Green Camp Road, the Redlands and Eastern Brisbane love that upgrade and it was always a nightmare. And another, and another huge festival that you've organised is the Wakely Christmas Carol, people absolutely love it and we have around 8,000 people attending annually. So Ryan, I want to sincerely thank you for everything you're doing for our city and here's to another 10 years.
Is there any further general business? councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, that's the best farewell speech I've ever heard. All you have to do is insert I and we in that speech and you've nailed it. councillor Murphy? Anyways.
Your topic councillor Strunk, please.
Anyways, listen, I rise to speak on a, on one matter that the Lord Mayor raised in his E and C speech or report and also a few events that happened over the weekend. Now, I wanted to raise the issue of water security. The Lord Mayor made a, made a statement in regards to water security and I thought maybe it was going to be something that was going to be a positive one, but it was a partisan one in the end. Really, water security is a motherhood statement, really. We all agree that we need water security. If we don't have water, we don't exist, literally. There's no species on this planet that consists without water than I'm aware of. So it should be a, it should be a bipartisan one, but it didn't take long for it to become partisan. So there was, there was one issue that, that came up in regards to the bulk water charge and somehow the bulk water charge is really a charge that really shouldn't be levied on anyone, it's too high, it doesn't really do much or accept, be, be a, be a collector, a tax collector basically. But of course, this, this, this council benefits from water, over $100 million a year from water as, that comes out of the dividend. So I just quickly looked up the water grid. So it kicked off in 2004, finished in 2006 and was fully operational, which connected 12 dams, also 10 drinking water treatment plants, three advanced water treatment plants, producing purified recycled water, recycled water, there you go, one desalination plant, I think that was about a billion dollars. Now, the Lord Mayor said it would cost $7 billion. Well, it was actually $6.9 billion, but I'll take that $100 million any time and be able to use it for something else more important other than water. 18 water, 18 water reservoirs, 22 bulk water pumping stations. And they're not cheap to run and they're not cheap to maintain either, I'll tell you right now. Altogether, 535 kilometres of pipe in this water grid. They cost $6.9 billion, which actually is, is an asset for South East Queensland that I thank Peter Beatty and his government for taking the bold steps and spent, it was a lot of money back then, I know, and, and people came out against it. But I'll tell you what, Tuwumba loves the grid because it operates, it's been operating ever since it opened up, right, in some form or fashion, right? And of course, Tuwumba's benefited because they didn't want recycled water, so they built a pipe from Somerset up to there, that was part of the grid, so they didn't actually have to, so they could just have potable water, not recycled water, because they just stopped.
Point of order, Chair. Will councillor Strunk take a question?
Only if I know the answer. Yes, I'll take your question, thank you.
councillor Strunk, who do you back in this water debate? The premier or the Water Minister, Glenn Butcher?
I think you probably know the question, the answer to that question before you even asked it. Listen, I back everyone when it comes to water security, honestly. But, but if you, but, but you really should do, this council, and I'm taking probably a bit too much time because I want to talk about some, some other items as well, but this council really should be coming out with a strategy that they could help with water security, not bag the state government over what happened 20 years ago, right? So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. But thank you for the, thank you for the question. I want to talk about, quickly about three events, if I have the time. Chair, Little Star Gold Star Programme, which rolled out at the, the new Anala Library in the new meeting room, which was just perfect for this programme. I compliment Karen and her team for rolling it out. It's a really important, as I'm sure every councillor knows, the programme is to encourage parents and kids to read more, to, parents to read to the kids when they can't read themselves until they get to a certain age. Just to, just to, because as I said, during a brief, brief time that I was given, that really, reading is probably the most important thing that you can ever teach a child because technology is never going to, is never going to do it for us. We have to be able to read. Other, other disciplines, of course, technology is overtaking, whether it be writing or, or maths and things like that. So I just want to compliment them and it was a terrific, there was, the room was full. It was that, there was a great uptake this year. Also, the Indian Day Fair, which the Lord Mayor mentioned and councillor Howard mentioned as well, took place. I just want to thank very much for the stick to this, if I can, there's not, that's not a word, but something that was, something I'd heard once, the stick to this of the Gopio and the Indian community, because I'll tell you what, the day was, the day started off rainy, continued right through until the formal proceedings and then the skies parted for all the politicians, you know, for the formal, for the formal stuff at about two o'clock, which we were very thankful for, of course, because there wasn't any undercover areas that we could have populated. But anyways, listen, this, this, this community does an enormous amount, not just in their own community, but other communities as well. And this was, this was a, the, you know, as I say, it's a 75, 75th anniversary of their independence. Finally, the Children of Courage, which is a, 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 sorry, Forest Lake Lions Club project that they undertake every year with a number of schools that identify those kids with intellectual or physical disabilities that, that really do it tough, but come through, come through their, their handicap in such a way as that they're really an inspiration to the rest of the community. And of course, their families who support them should, were congratulated as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers in general business? councillor McCoy.
Thank you, Chair, and welcome to Two Minute Tuesday. I'm happy to say that we started last night, I'm going backwards, I guess, last night, a citizenship ceremony, which you were, what do you call that? MC? Adjudicating? I'm not sure. It was pretty funny. I quite liked it when the Lord Mayor got up and said, welcome to Brisbane, there are many pros and some cons, mainly cons, I mean pros. I thought that was quite a, quite a funny little moment. But it's always nice, as you would know, we have mega induction week this week, there's 5,800 new Australians taking the oath or pledging allegiance to our great country and I welcome them and thank them for adding to the fabric of society. The Clarina Street Playground, this is an amazing nature play playground in Chapel Hill and I popped down there again, just to go and check it out. We realised that we need to change the swing configuration, so we're putting in a second swing and that should be done in the next four to six weeks. And it's very, very popular. The neighbours are telling me that people are climbing, kids are climbing all over at all hours, which is great, I guess. I ducked in and visited Sonia, a parent from the PNC at Ironside State School and Mrs Whitwick and Mrs Whitwick, and we did a little tour of the school to try and figure out if there's somewhere that we could do a school farm. I'm going to try and assist with worm farms and composting and so on. And they're trying to get the kids more involved in sustainable food waste programmes, which is great. Turinga Community Garden turned two on Sunday and I understand they had a little function down there, unfortunately couldn't make it, had something else on, but congratulations to them. It's been a long two years trying to get that garden going. We've got lots of planter boxes there and we, as you would have heard last week, we got one of the local developers to give back to the community and they donated a planter box and have committed to donate nine more. Police have said that at Intrapilly Train Station, two, four youths were arrested for the mugging of two teenagers at the station. And this just further solidifies my position that we need to try and improve security at the train station and defunding the police is not the answer. The, oh, this is an exciting one, there will be a monument to the Royal Australian Engineers put up at Tuong's Anzac Park in about, or, well, opening on Remembrance Day, on obviously the 11th of November, the French ambassador's coming along, which is going to be a very nice moment. And we're putting in a Bailey Bridge, a replica, original Bailey Bridge, which is great. West's AFL Juniors, West Juniors AFL had their fundraising lunch on Friday, so I popped off over there. And I got to sit next to one of my all time idols, Simon Black, who was three time premiership player, branlow medallist and norm smith medallist, played more than 300 games for the Brisbane Lions. The guy is an absolute legend and you know what? I always expected that he'd be a little bit high and mighty, but he is such a down to earth guy and it was a real pleasure to meet him. And I wish him all the best for the Simon Black Academy, which he runs to teach kids about football. And speaking about football, the Brisbane Lions are playing their last home and away game Friday night, so I hope we beat the demons. Oh, look at that, I've gone over three minutes, sorry.
Three and 20, thank you. councillor Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just rise to speak about the council parking inspectors ongoing discrimination against disabled residents in our city. This has been an issue that's been plugging away for some time, but I wanted to put it on the record here and make sure councillor Wines was aware of it. I've written to him about it as well and I hope the Lord Mayor's aware of it. I'm sure he's received correspondence about it from time to time. The issue in a nutshell is that the state government issues disability parking permits, which I'm sure many councillors will be familiar with, and they allow you to speak, park both in disabled parking areas, but also allow you to park in other time limited but also allow you to park in other time-limited parking areas with some exceptions on the time limits. The problem is that those are physical permits that appear in the, usually placed on the dashboard or the front windscreen of a car. But since council has introduced the automatic camera-based parking inspections or parking fines, we've seen a lot of disabled people receiving fines for parking in a disabled zone, even when they are displaying a disability parking permit. And this is, I think, quite an important issue that I hope the mayor will take the time to look into. I don't, don't want to make it a party political thing. I think it's just a problem of systems not being well-adapted to their purpose. The, I, I appreciate that the permits themselves are issued by the state government, and, and it's probably a source of some frustration for the council that those permit systems aren't better coordinated with local councils. But the fact is that Brisbane City Council is issuing fines to disabled residents who are legally parked in disabled parking spots. And this is happening routinely. From the feedback we've had from some of those residents, they then have to go through the entire process of appealing and challenging a fine. They're finding that council is often unremorseful and unapologetic about incorrectly issuing those fines. And council appears to be making no attempts whatsoever to correct the problem. So as I said, the problem is that the, the parking inspector cars with the automatic cameras on top are just driving around. They just look at the rego plate, they issue the fine because there's no disability permit connected to that particular registration number. And then the person has to, who's already dealing with enough as it is, has to deal with challenging that fine. So I don't think this is a good system at all. I think it's highly discriminatory. I think it probably constitutes a human rights abuse when you look into the details of it. And I, I think it's a real embarrassment to this council administration that after several years now of people complaining and raising concerns about it, we're still not seeing any obvious action from the council administration. If, if any members of the LNP administration want to stand up and correct the record on this, I'd welcome that discussion. But I, I do think it's a problem that needs further attention. And I'll be asking the mayor questions about it in question time in future council sessions because the, the simple reality is that disabled people shouldn't be getting these incorrectly issued fines and shouldn't have to go through the hassle and stress of contesting fines again and again and again when it's the council system that's making a mistake. So I think the short-term solution is for council, unfortunately, maybe the short-term solution is that council will have to stop using those camera-based parking enforcement vehicles because they are routinely and systematically issuing fines wrongly to disabled people. So if council can't sort the system out, it needs to stop using those camera-based car, enforcement cars and, and go back to the old method of inspectors patrolling individually and checking windscreens individually to make sure that there's no disability permit there. If the council's not willing to do that, then some, some other system needs to be developed quite quickly because we're seeing an increase in the number of complaints. It seems like the council parking inspectors are becoming more reliant on the, the camera cars, as they're called. And if that's happening, and the camera cars are being used more and more to police parking rules, then there's going to be more and more people with disability permits who are incorrectly getting fined as a result of that system change. So it's, I don't think it's satisfactory for the council to just point the finger of blame at the state government because it's the council system that is issuing these fines incorrectly. So I'm calling on you, Lord Mayor, and councillor Wines to look into this and actually develop some practical solutions. Because as I said, it, it's discriminatory against disabled people. You're setting them up for a lot of hassle and frustration when you're telling them that they can park legally in a disabled permit spot because they've got that permit on their dashboard, and then you're fining them. It's, it's just not fair.
Thank you. Any further general business? No further general business. I declare the meeting closed.